This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 3rd, 2018, and shall be posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall 221 South 5th Avenue on January 3rd, 2018, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. If you come up to speak, please speak into the microphone, and you'll need to keep the microphone close to your mouth if you speak, so we can hear you. Matt, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Beryl Mittler.
Here.
Councilwoman Fine.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilwoman Hale. Councilwoman Kim Cho Han. Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Here.
Borough Attorney.
Here.
Borough Administrator.
Okay, may I have a-
Oh, here, sorry. I was going down, sorry.
You're here, I see you.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and conference meetings held June 12th, 2018, July 10th, 2018, August 14th, 2018, September 4th, 2018, and October 9th, 2018 as distributed?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Fine.
Abstain. I was not here for the June 12th meeting.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
I'll abstain as to September 4th, yes, as to all else.
I'll change that.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I'm used to you getting to me so soon.
I'll call some other names.
Okay, let's start with the council reports, and I'll start on my right with Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. I see there's a good number of people in the audience, so I'm going to keep this very, very brief. Regarding Main Street, Christmas trees will be available for one last day, this Friday, December 21st, at the municipal lot next to the Main Street office. This is the first year that the farmer's market was offering the Christmas trees. We're really happy to be able to do it. Friday is the last day for that. The farmer's market has closed for the season, and I want to thank our Main Street, our sponsor St. Peters University Hospital, the volunteers, the vendors, and all the customers for making 2018 another successful year for our statewide-known farmer's market. And I just would like to wish everybody a very happy holiday and a very happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Councilwoman Fine, and then Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
So I don't have a report tonight, Madam Mayor, but I do want to wish everyone a happy holiday.
Thank you. Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a lot going on these days, and first I want to say the school security bill that I had mentioned at our last council meeting, that has passed through the Assembly, and supposedly in January that bill will be signed, and the bill is to give all kids the same amount of security access, private schools, students, a bump into the protection of students in our school system, so I reported on that, just wanted was to follow up. On a lighter note, much happier note, that during the holiday season, the Highland Park PBA has offered, has been given for the past four years, they have been doing donations to kids in the school. And this year, they have provided over 40 gifts to local Highland Park school students, so thank you very much for the Santas at Highland Park Police Department. We really appreciate that. On another note, I have been on this council for the past 18 years. I have served in various capacities, and during that time, one of the things that I've worked tirelessly on is our police. I've been in charge of public safety, which is fire, police, first aid, and the municipal courts. And one of the things that I prided myself on was how we changed the culture of the police department. When I first came to Highland Park, it was a different police department that I personally experienced. And because of the way I was treated as a resident, when I came on this council, one of the things was to make sure that other residents were not being treated the same way, and that all residents were treated with dignity and respect. And I poured a lot of my time, a lot of me, a lot of energy, a lot of thoughts, hard work, dedication into changing the culture of the police department. As many of you are aware, about two weeks ago, a police report came out through the Star Ledger, and it talks about the stops in Highland Park, and the ranking that the police department got, and how residents of Highland Park or people driving through Highland Park are treated by the police department. We took a look at it, and we continue to do some research on the report that came out. And one of the things that we know that we have to do is roll up our sleeve again and take a different, take another intensive look at how policing is done in Highland Park, how we view the report that comes out, and what it is that we have to find ways of correcting based on that report that came out. With that said, maybe I should have led with this, but our police chief that has served over 30 years, chief? Thirty-three years he's been with us here in Highland Park. And in April of 2019, he will be retiring, April 1st. So we are in the process of looking for, we don't have a police captain, we only have a police chief. We did not replace the captain when the captain retired. So we are in the process now of looking to hire a police chief and a police captain. However, we want to do things a little bit differently. With the hiring, we're going to be doing the following. We have, for the past several months, we have been meeting with the chiefs of police, the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police, and we've met with many members from that area. And what we have been doing is taking a serious look and say, okay, what's the scale level that we're looking for? Who are they, and what can they provide? Do they know about our issues, and how do we work with them and they work with us to provide, and taking a look at who we are as a community and how they can address our needs? I've met with members of the PBA from Newark, East Orange, South Plainfield, East Brunswick, South Brunswick, Trenton, and we've had diverse, a plethora of different retired chiefs of police. And we have had conversations. And one of the things that we want to do when we are starting our interview process, they are with us to take a look at, they're going to be doing the interview of the candidates, they have the questions that, they'll be mapping our questions that they'll be asking the candidates, and so they can be a good fit for us. We will be, in the process as we move along, we will not be hiring a police chief immediately or a police captain immediately. We will be hiring acting chiefs and acting captains. And they will be mentored by the chiefs, by a member of the Chiefs Association. So they will have mentorship, ongoing mentorship, by one of these members of the chiefs of police, or maybe more than one. We have been talking to some people that we're really interested in to take a look at how this would work out, but that's one of the things that we're going to be doing in that process. We're also going to be looking at, how do we move forward and look at ourself? How do we change the culture of the police department? And how do we see ourself? How do we, for the next five years, or the next year, how do we grow, and how do we continue to put a growth plan in place? And one of the things that we're going to be doing is looking at getting our police department accredited. And with accreditation, what comes with it, it's not just top-down, it's bottom-up. So these members of the chiefs of police will be here to help us to assess and to get us accredited, and it will be a learning process for everyone. So everyone in the police department, from the guy in patrol or for the newest person that comes on, they'll be a part of the accreditation process, and so everyone will be learning to get new tools in their toolboxes, and we'll be looking at ourself quite differently. So some of the things that we have seen, we can help to erase, and to change, and to grow as the police department. We will also be working with the Human Relations Commission, because I think it's important as we look to hire our new chiefs and our new captains, that we ask our Human Relations Commission to provide some input from residents who may have questions that they want to say, could this question be included? So those questions will be asking residents to file through the Human Relations Commission, and they'll be passed on to us, and we'll move going forward. Councilmember Hale, who is not here tonight, I believe the mayor has his report of how him and I have been working together, so he wrote something up, and I think he gave it to you, Mayor, and can you please just, because it dovetails into what I'm explaining, so I'm going to turn this part over, and then I'll jump in when need be.
So I want to, I know you started to talk about the chief being here for 33 years, and Elsie, as she mentioned, was instrumental in working with the chief of police in making those significant changes that did occur. And the department, you know that, you know, nobody's ever perfect, but the department that we have here today, thanks to the chief's guidance, is a totally different department than existed when Elsie first came on board. So I know Elsie wanted to say that about Chief Risco, and I think it's important that you know that we recognize the many changes you put in place since you've been acting as our chief here in Highland Park. And so, as Elsie mentioned, Matt Hale is not here today, and he gave me some of his information, but these are not his words, I had to take it and put it in my words, but this is the general idea here. He wanted me to convey to everyone that, that we recognize that nobody is perfect, as I said, and that's one of the reasons that we formed a new commission, and that is a group of people who came out of that first meeting that I had, that we called the Committee of Understanding, where we had members of our police department and members of the community come to talk about issues that they felt needed to be addressed. But this group has been meeting with me, Councilwoman Foster Dublin, and Councilwoman Hale now for several months, I don't know, we've had three or four or five meetings thus far, I don't remember. And this group I have asked, I have made into a commission here at the municipality. I know that they want to change the name of the group, but we've been working under the Bias-Free Highland Park Commission. That name may change. And the members of the commission include Jason Burton, Sheila Seacar-
Justin Burton.
I'm sorry?
Justin Burton.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Justin Burton. Sheila Seacar, Julie Luck, Lucinda Holt, Sonia Hedlam, Matt Hirsch, and Pastor Kermit Moss. Matt Hirsch and Pastor Moss, along with Sonia, also serve on the Human Relations Commission, so there is some synergy between the two groups. The council has voted on this new group being formed, and as I said, their name may change as we move forward. They will be working closely with me and the council, and in conjunction with the Human Relations Commission. Their mission is basically to ensure that the governing body addresses any issues of racial bias within Highland Park's borders amongst personnel and citizenry. They may fine-tune that mission, I've asked them to come up with a mission to present to us, and I'm anxious to continue working with them. As Councilwoman Foster Dublin said, we, if, you now know that we will be interviewing for the position of acting chief and acting captain, and if you feel that you have any questions, that you think that you would want us to make sure that we ask, the place to put the questions through is the Human Relations Commission, and they will forward those questions to us. Okay, so that's Matt Hale's report, and basically mine.
Mayor, I forgot one thing.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind. I just want to remind everybody too, this last week of shopping before the holidays, visit our pop-up flea market this weekend on December 22nd and 23rd, both Saturday and Sunday, 9:00 to 5:00 at The Loft across from The Stop &amp; Shop. And please shop local, visit all of our other small businesses for all your holiday shopping. And one more event we have to round out the year, join us for, I believe it's our fifth annual Kwanzaa event, celebrating African culture, heritage, and unity. And they'll be, usually they have some snacks, and they might have some dance and some song, so it's a fun event. Please join us, thank you.
And that's at the?
That's at Kinetics, thank you.
Okay. Mayor, just to finish off where we left off, this is really important to me, as I said, I've worked tirelessly on this, and it's something that was one of the passions that drove me when I came into Highland Park and decided to join this council, that we really needed was to see change. And I was, I remain very passionate and very committed to see change in Highland Park where everyone is treated equally, and we'll be working together, along with the police department, to make sure that we see fairness across the border where everyone is concerned. And I do believe that us being accredited will help, will go a long way with understanding and respect for all, because there'll be formalized strength across the board, so I think that is going to be a wonderful thing for us. With that being said, I would also like to say thank you, chief, for the 33 years of service, for you coming in, and the bias training that you have put together, the various training programs that you were ahead of the state on, that they adopted some of the stuff that we have done in Highland Park. And that was part of your vision, to create change and all of that, so thank you for your years of service, and thank you for, like, really digging in and see how we can improve and how we can continue to improve as a community. With this, last but not least, on December 25th will be the holiday dinner at the community center from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., so anyone who wishes to come and have a hot meal or to help out, you can come to the community center, December 25th, and have a good time, and a good time will be had by all. Thank you so much, and a happy holidays to all.
All right, and lastly, I have been working closely with the AG's office on policing in general, but also for advice here. And they were going to try to make it to talk with everybody about the actions that they are taking in response to the Use of Force Report, but at the last minute, they couldn't make it, but they did send me a statement and asked if I could read it. It's kind of long. I will read it, because they did ask me to, so I hope you will bear with me as I do put this through. And this was issued by Attorney General Gubier Gruel of the Department of Law and Public Safety, New Jersey State Police, County Prosecutors Association of New Jersey, New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police, New Jersey State Policemen's Benevolent Association, and I could go on. And this is his statement. Every day, New Jersey's 36,000 law enforcement officers put their lives on the line to ensure the safety and well-being of our fellow residents. They do extraordinary work, often under challenging circumstances and often without the recognition they deserve. Our police officers interact with the public millions of times a year, each year, with interactions ranging from routine traffic stops to active shooters. In the overwhelming majority of cases, these officers handle the matter professionally, and the interaction ends without incident. From time to time, officers are confronted with situations where they have little choice but to use force against an individual who is not complying within a lawful manner or who poses an immediate threat to themselves or others. Oftentimes, this use of force is a necessary and appropriate response to dangerous situations. Unfortunately, there may be a rare occasion where an officer uses violent force against a civilian without justification. We condemn such actions, not simply because such actions are wrong, but also because they do us disservice to the vast majority of law enforcement officers committed to upholding the highest standards of the profession. For years, the state of New Jersey has required that law enforcement agencies collect and report data about the use of force by their officers. We recognize that use of force data, when properly collected, serves many useful purposes, from identifying policing trends to building public confidence in law enforcement. But numbers rarely tell the full story, and data can be easily misused to advance false narratives that malign our profession. The risks are especially great when the data is collected, reported, or analyzed without uniform standards. Therefore, it is crucial, not simply that we obtain accurate data, but also that we provide the context necessary to understand and explain the information to the public. Last week, the Star Ledger began publishing a series of articles about the gaps in the uniformity of our state's use-of-force data collection efforts, as well as the newspaper's efforts to build a use-of-force database of its own. The articles make one thing clear: although individual municipalities, departments, or counties may have effective systems in place, our statewide data collection system requires a complete overhaul. But it is for this very reason that we also caution reporters and members of the public without relying on data in the Star Ledger's database, about relying on data in the Star Ledger's database, because our state lacks uniform data collection methods. The records obtained by the Star Ledger may be inaccurate in some cases, and may cause those relying on the data to draw incorrect conclusions about the state of law enforcement in New Jersey. We are committed to fixing this problem. It fails, it falls to those of us in law enforcement to provide our data collection efforts and ensure that any data we provide the public is both accurate and properly contextualized. Today, we are announcing a joint effort to address this issue. Under the leadership of the Office of the Attorney General, we will be working together to design new systems for obtaining use-of-force data in New Jersey. We intend to, one, standardize the process that state, county, and local law enforcement agencies use to record use-of-force incidents and report them to the state, including through the use of standardized electronic forms. Two, identify ways to contextualize use-of-force incidents with accurate information about the officer's actions. And, three, identify one or more academic institutions to partner with the state of New Jersey to help analyze use-of-force data and ensure the rigor of the state's data collection efforts. We intend to work quickly to develop new tools with the goal of completing our work sometime in the new year. We cannot do our job without the confidence of the people we serve, and we are committed to ensuring that the public understands when and under what circumstances New Jersey's law enforcement officers use force against the course, during the course of their public duties. So that is what I suppose they would have said had they been here, but that is the action that the Attorney General's office is now taking. As you know, after some incidents that occurred in the spring of this year, we hired a firm that was recommended to us by the NAACP by the name of Delacy Davis. He has been collecting the information on stop reports, and is in the process of pulling all of that together and analyzing it. I have asked him for a deadline date to get to me already with these numbers, and he has told me that he will have it in the first quarter of 2019, and we'll follow up with him on a regular basis to ensure that we have something by that date. Okay, and now we enter the public discussion session, part one. Let me remind-
Do you have a public works report?
You're sitting on my right, I'm sorry. Council President, would you like to give a report?
I have a very brief report, because we do have a lot of public participation tonight, but there's some important public works, things happening, first and foremost of which, please check the Borough website. While it isn't the greatest, first and foremost, right on the page are some changes to recycling as a result of Chinese curtailment of resources, which then trickles down to the regional processing, which then trickles down to the processing that we have to take our recycling to. There have been some very important changes as to what can be recycled. I urge everyone to check it. It's on Recycling Coach. We'll be advising people, hopefully by some of our other planning, and I've spoken to DPW about putting it out on the Borough's Facebook as well, so you really need to check it.
Tell them what Recycling Coach is.
Recycling Coach is an app that you can get for free on your phone, which reminds you about recycling days, bulk trash days, and you can look up over 6,000 things that can be recycled. Also, well, the location of Middlesex County Recycling, since you can take used motor oil, used siding, your construction company, if they're fixing your fireplace or something can take waste there. You just go to Recycling Coach on Google, download the app, and you have it. We are on it every day, putting out information. Stephanie Cho Han isn't here, but I'd just like to congratulate the installation of the base of the Band-Aid bench. I was there when Lucky Jo and her sister were pouring concrete and watching and talking about it, so it is finally in place. With regard to Middlesex Water, we asked Terry and I in the fall that they cooperate with us, not in some great planning issue, but in down-in-the-weeds, everyday rate-setting planning. They gave us a lot of suggestions, very practical suggestions on what we can do, and also agreed to work with us on a quarterly basis to start looking at predictions, you know, based on past issues and anticipated use. Sustainable Highland Park, our plastic bag ordinance will be introduced on January 22nd. Right now, we fine-tuned it a little bit, so as you know, the Borough now taking, being more active and transparent in important ordinances or resolutions that need public discussion. We put the first version out a couple months ago that everybody could take a look at and review. We got a lot of comments on it. We had two open public meetings on it, so we did some fine-tuning to it, and also finally got the latest version of the state's bill and adjusted it a little bit more. Before we introduce it, we're going to put it back up on the website again to take a look at, so please review that. The work in, basically, in the Meadows Trail and the native plant sanctuary are done for the winter, but I'd like to thank the volunteers who were even, I saw a couple of them when it was 22 degrees the other morning, were doing final cleanup, I'd like to thank them. Finally, in closing, I just wish everyone end of the year holidays, whether you celebrate the solstice, Kwanzaa, Merry Christmas. And as I said, I was a co-sponsor at the menorah lighting a couple weeks ago. The end of the year is also time for quiet reflection on all of us and where we want to go in the coming year as a town. Thank you.
And just so you don't feel badly, Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
And Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
Well, yes, I would like to deliver a very short, it's not even a report, I kind of try to cater my comments to where I hear questions coming from, either residents or anything I want to give everybody a heads up about. So one thing I'm getting a lot of questions about are road improvements. We won't be doing any road improvements until the spring, but just so everybody knows, we do apply for and receive state aid every year, and the roads that will be kind of starting off first in the new year will be North Third between Raritan and Montgomery, Maryland between Raritan and roughly the Irving parking lot, I'll have to figure out exactly where that line is, South Seventh between Magnolia and Woodbridge Avenue, and Hilton- that line is, South Seventh between Magnolia and Woodbridge Avenue, and Hilton between Woodbridge and Lewis. So those are already funded, and we're going to be putting out the bid specs in the new year. So just so you know, those are coming. And we've also got a application to the DOT for the 2019 road schedule for South Adelaide, Raritan to roughly Johnson or maybe slightly beyond, I'm not sure exactly where we drew the line, South Park, North Fifth to North Eighth, and then Cherry, all of Cherry. So those are kind of on the front burner, but at the same time, that, those are kind of our state aid projects. We've also been talking, and now we've been working on the road survey of all of our roads, and we've had the inventory done. We're now importing it into software that's going to basically help us prioritize and rank road projects in the coming years, and we plan on doing a kind of a five-year program where we will then be able to rank not only real significant road upgrades, but there's also just reconditioning and minor, more minor treatments that are actually more affordable that extend the life of our roads. So hopefully, the next time I hear one of you call me with "where's my road on the list?", I'll have you a very strong, firm answer for you, probably in around March of next year, and we'll be rolling that out, and you'll be hearing more. But that's just one of those things I've been hearing. The other thing, I just want to make sure everyone aware, is aware that the water and sewer bills did go out. If you didn't get yours, please call the office or check the website. I just wanted to, I know we've had mail problems in the past, so I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that they were out. This will be the last quarter with the surcharge. I know that's a big question we get, so the surcharge will sunset as of the end of this year, so you won't see that in your first quarter next year, Bill. So that's all I've got for this evening.
Okay. And now my mayor's report, because that was Matt Hale's report that I gave you before. I just want to invite everyone to come to our reorganization meeting on January 2nd. I'll be giving the Borough, State of the Borough report with lots of interesting information, and each council person will give a quick update on the progress their committees have made over the past year. And saying that, let's now move to public discussion. Now, this is the first public discussion, so I must caution you, the clerk will be keeping time. Each person is allowed to speak for three minutes, and we have to cut you off after three minutes by statute, and then we will have a second open public comment portion of the meeting later on.
What's the time, it's time for the first public session?
Three minutes each person.
I mean, total time?
Oh, total, the total time is 15 minutes for the first public session. So it's basically the five, first five people who come up to speak. Okay, please state your name and address.
Julie Luck, 602 Mia Drive.
Can we hear her? Can I?
No.
Julie Luck?
Is it on? There's a red dot, does that mean anything?
It's on.
It's on?
It's on.
I am a member of Bias Free HP, and I, along with a few other members from the group, have been meeting with the mayor and council members, Elsie Foster-Dublin and Matt Hale, to discuss racial disparities in Highland Park policing. As you just mentioned, Mayor, those of us who have been meeting with you since September would like both the name of the commission as well as the powers and duties changed. Would you just explain the process to get those things changed and when we can expect that to happen?
Okay, so the process for the name change, and I'm going to look to the clerk to verify this.
We haven't even looked up to the ordinance.
Well, it's not on final reading yet.
Tonight.
Yeah, tonight, tonight is when the final reading is, occurs.
Yeah, you'd have to be introducing next year.
But, so next year, we can introduce an amendment to the ordinance to make the name change, and then as far as any mission changes, or then we, let's discuss them in our next meeting so that we can all agree on them, and then we can make those amendments either at the same time or later on.
Okay, and I just wanted to be very specific that despite the larger Bias Free group members speaking out since March to address racial disparities in Highland Park policing, and despite a smaller Bias Free group meeting with you each month since September about policing, there is zero reference to the Highland Park Police or policing in the commission's powers and duties, and it's just imperative that this language is incorporated into the commission's mission.
So let's talk about that at our next meeting. I think we have something coming up soon. Okay, great. Thank you, Julie. Please state your name and address. You can take it out if it's easier.
Ira Mintz, North Fifth Avenue. Two comments. One is that we have a problem, and two is I think we're making a mistake. The problem is that we're sending the wrong message to our neighbors. With the recent incidents of profiling, the recent Star Ledger use-of-force report, we're sending a message to some of the members of our community that they're being treated differently than other members of our community, and that is a problem, that is our problem, and we need to fix it. The mistake, I think, is relying on the same chiefs of police who supervise the departments around the state that have led to the overuse of force to be the ones that are helping us hire the replacement for our chief and for our captain. Transparency is the key to insulating this council and the mayor and our police department from criticism at the end of this hiring process. And when I say transparency is the, is the solution, is the way to prevent criticism, that means we should involve the community in the selection process of the next chief and the next captain, and I don't mean that by just making a suggestion as to a question that should be asked through the Human Relations Commission. That means having people there to ask those questions, to hear the answers to those questions, to open up the process, make it a transparent process, have community input. That's the way to insulate the council from criticism, and that's the way to be a welcoming community to our new police chief and a way to protect our citizens from the kinds of problems that we've been seeing.
Okay, thank you. Please state your name and address.
My name is Francesca Maruska, 216 South Third Avenue, and I'll be reading the statement on behalf of Jessica Hunston and Dan Batty, who live at 304 Montgomery Street. I'm going to read fast. It was a year ago when we first shared an analysis of nearly two years of traffic stop and use-of-force data that showed racial disparities with two members of the Human Relations Committee, Commission. We also shared this data in February of this year with Councilmember Elsie Foster-Dublin, and then Councilmember Matthew Hirsch, and again in March with the mayor, Councilmember Welkowitz, and Police Chief Risco. Our purpose in doing so was to raise concerns about what the data showed, but also to encourage the Highland Park Police Department to analyze their own data in a meaningful way that could highlight concerns about racial bias and profiling in their own policing practices. Time and time again, our concerns have been met with the following responses from the mayor and council: denial both in private and public meetings that there is a problem with patterns of racial disparity, and instead repeatedly questioning the analysis; a postponement of meaningful action by maintaining that more data and research is needed; narrowly focusing a follow-up analysis on traffic stops when it should have included a minimum of pedestrian stops, low-level arrests, use-of-force, and community interviews. We have collectively asked in three petitions, now signed by more than 400 concerned residents, for the development of a plan for ongoing review and analysis of policing data that includes representation from the community and is focused on the increased transparency and identification of racial disparities and potential patterns of racial bias. Let us be clear, we are not asking for a monthly police blotter which merely reports a total number of incidents. Rather, we are asking for you to develop a plan that involves community representation with the clear intent of analyzing incidents and policing, including but not limited to suspicious person, noise complaints, traffic stops, use-of-force, arrests, and specific to identifying racial disparities. In addition, once you have taken immediate steps in implementing implicit bias and de-escalation training, the type of analysis of data we are describing would allow for a close examination of the impact of police training. While you have repeatedly noted cultural awareness training and the minimum training as required by the Attorney General on implicit racial bias, you have not shown that these trainings had any impact on racial disparities in policing practices. With the analysis performed in the force report, as well as the analysis completed by the ACLU People Power, it is clear that across the last six years, racial disparities in use-of-force have remained relatively the same. Future trainings must be chosen that are effective in changing policing practices that produce racial disparities. Only through ongoing analysis of our own data can you make the case that these trainings have proved effective and continued, or ineffective, and different strategies are needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Anna Haley at 135 North Fifth Avenue. It is exhausting and troubling, to say the least, to watch this community struggle for more than a year now to obtain meaningful response by its town leadership to a situation of grave concern, racial profiling by our Borough Police. Highland Park has a police racial profiling problem. This has been well-known. From the moment I arrived in 2016, I was overwhelmed with stories from my neighbors, white and black and other folks of color, about historic avoidance of Highland Park Police in driving through, because it's well-known that folks are targeted by their race here, and then more recently, the outcome of extensive analysis of Highland Park's own police data. But it remains a public secret rather than a focus of planful intentional action in this liberal infringement. The delay, the diffusion, the avoidance, the deflection is unmistakable by you collectively and is deeply distressing. Let's review what we've encountered as residents over the last year in attempting to get community leaders to review, to respond to serious documented concerns about racial profiling by our police department in meaningful ways that change practice. First, we heard a claim that Highland Park is a bubble, that such things don't happen here. That finally got moved beyond. Then we heard, it's not really about the police, but it's the problem that's housed in larger society. This is, of course, deeply true and troubling, and it's an important point, but community members don't, as often as police, carry and wield guns, and they don't have the right to detain and apply force and arrest each other. More problematically, over the last year, this claim has been consistently used by town leadership to diffuse attention away from the actions of our police that are disproportionate by race. A related claim is that we need to understand each other better. Variants have included calls to promote cultural sensitivity and to help our youth interact more positively with police. These are patently offensive when we are talking about the potential for tragic loss of life, which Amiri and his family were arguably moments away from experiencing. You cannot tell that family or their neighbors or friends that that was not the case. They, to this day, have not gotten an apology for that trauma. These are, yeah, along these lines, the latest Bias Free Commission makes, as Julie already referred to, literally no reference to police anywhere in its charge. This is outrageous. We are a year into this situation. We've also been put off in our focus on attending to Highland Park Police racial profiling with the claim that Highland Park Police Officers have their reasons for stopping persons of color in Highland Park, ones they can't disclose due to ongoing investigations. So make no mistake about it, this is an authoritarian free-for-all, and the reign of non-accountability, non-transparency, and non-trust in our community continues. The audit that we have is limited in scope, well, is set up to literally inform us very little beyond what's already been done, and the data that we've already been looking at is police data, right? So that honestly, you shouldn't have to look anywhere beyond that. Most basically, there's been scant acknowledgement among our own town leadership, none that I've heard from the mayor, little from among our council, that police racial profiling here anywhere is even a thing. We've heard nothing from our leadership that it's actually a thing, that racial profiling is a thing, and that it's a thing in our town. There's been no definition of it, no acknowledgement that it ever happens. How can we possibly solve the problem absent that? So, I have to do three reasons.
Oh, excuse me, you're over three minutes. You can come back up later if you'd like to, but I would like to address a couple of the things that you said.
This came up before, I, there are two other people behind me. This is public comments, I'm not sure what the protocol is for having representatives...
No, the protocol is that I, I can comment, okay?
You spend a year to come in. I'm, it's curious that you come in tonight versus the all the time for a prostitute that we've had a chance to talk about this.
Well, that's what I want to comment on, because I find that to be, it's an untruth. You and I have never had a personal conversation. My doors are always open.
Two or three, in this room, outside that room, in the, in the city on understanding of the beings.
Anna, Anna.
That's a mistruth as well, I'm not going to stand...
Anna.
It's not.
My door is always open. I'm here every Tuesday, every Wednesday, every Thursday. I, I have said... I have said clearly that I will not stand for any discrimination in our community. I had, I said it at our committee meeting, our community meeting when we talked about things, were you here at that meeting?
I was.
Okay.
We initially, you and I talked after the first council meeting, we talked in there.
Okay.
At least three conversations about this.
Listen, Anna.
I'm assisting, if you not remember, was that you were in my conversation or you're dealing with the community who have fought and spent a ton of time...
Anna.
Very little response.
Anna, I am happy to discuss this further with you. I wanted to bring, I wanted to bring this into our everyday discussions by the formation of this committee.
With no mention of the police in the charge.
Okay.
How does that possibly advance the conversation? And more importantly...
And what, and what I did say when Julie asked if we could change that mission, that we will talk about it in our meeting, and I hear what you're saying, but you have to give us a chance to talk with you about these things.
It's been a year.
Okay, Anna.
We've talked in the voting booth at this point.
Anna.
We've talked in the voting booth.
Anna, listen to me.
We've talked in the voting booth. We've focused on your actions, not on what you say in meetings that have no follow-throughs.
Anna, and I want to address the follow-through, okay? We hired an outside firm to look at the numbers. Am I happy that I don't have the analysis yet? I don't have the information back from them.
Analysis already, and then one very described one that you guys hired on without community inputs, that will get, could be little, limited, limited to...
Okay, okay. Let's continue this conversation, okay? Please. I want to give the next person a chance to talk.
Andrew Schwartz, 1412 Central Avenue.
Can you speak a little louder?
Andrew Schwartz, 1412 Central Avenue. I saw that we have an ordinance to buy, I believe it's nine lots, lots. I was just curious what it's for, what those lots are. Sorry, I know our business is already in that, in those areas. I know it's...
Which, which ordinance is he referring to?
It's on, I think, second meeting this evening. Do you want me to...
Yeah, could you?
So, we're actually, there, the lots that are listed there, I'm sorry, the lots that are listed there are, one of the properties is what we're actually looking to acquire, and we're trying to negotiate with other property owners in that area, but the one that we're actually in active negotiations with, I don't know the lot numbers, 101 Raritan, which is for sale.
I know you're looking, it says three and a half million dollars.
That's already been appropriated through a bond ordinance in a prior year, so that's not new money to be found.
I was looking at the budget from last year, and I believe this is about $20 million a day that we have over here. I'm not sure, it's very...
No, the, the capital budget is, is not part of the operating budget.
Our, our complete budget for the year is about 11 million for the town, right?
A little more.
A little more.
Yeah.
I think taking out bonds and buying some more property for three and a half million, but it's basically a third of the...
Can I just clarify, that's money that's already been bonded for and appropriated, it's not new borrowing.
I understand.
So that was already done in 2017.
Well, just, we keep borrowing money, this town, keep buying new things, there's no new businesses coming in really, there's no new things like that. People are paying a ton in taxes, water bills are going, are astronomical, mine doubled, it's $780 since, this quarter. I mean, it's out of control. People are moving to Edison, two bucks over. I mean, I just don't know, I don't hear what's happening with lowering taxes, with, you know, fixing the problem that's obviously there. People can't keep, you can't afford to keep doing this, and I understand it's not easy, but I don't hear us lowering the budget or working out the budget, and I hear, I'm sure there are ways, but people aren't hearing it. And now spending this money, which is allotted, I guess, but spending more, borrowing more, I'm sure there are going to be more things, we took a million out for the sewers, it's just, it's consistent, and there's no, it's a lot of money. People are paying tons and tons of money in taxes, and I don't hear at all what is being spent on. So I think, I'd like to hear, I'd like to sit down one day, and I think maybe somebody can bring a report one time and discuss it.
I think it would, I think it would be a good idea for you to come in and meet with the Borough Administrator to go over all of the budget lines.
And just so everybody knows, we're just getting into our budget season. We usually introduce, we target late May, that's the statute, March, excuse me, is when we formally introduce the budget, but we're busy pulling every, all the pieces together now. So in the new year, when I have a... So, in the new year, when I have a better handle on things, you know, you'll be hearing more from the council and myself as we move through the budgeting process for 2019.
Is the town working on lowering taxes? I'm just curious.
Yes, it is our number one priority.
It's a huge issue. It's, it's a complicated one, and I'd welcome a chance to talk to you more about it.
I appreciate it, thank you.
How are we doing on time?
I think.
John, how are we doing on time?
She's been keeping time, I can't do both.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Gross, Mr. Gross. It's, are we at the?
Technically, yes.
Okay, so you're the last person that can speak now.
Good evening, my name is Herb Gross, and I live at Adelaide Gardens. Tonight, I would like to bring out a report that was issued by the United States government, and the report went to the American Legion, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, and the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 370 located in New Brunswick. At the previous election that was held in this country, the report states that over 93 percent, let me repeat that, over 93 percent of the votes counted were by veterans and their families. And this is a report by the government. Ladies and gentlemen, it was the veterans, the men and a woman who I served with, your husbands, your fathers, your grandfathers, and many veterans who are senior citizens today. The veterans have fought for and defended your right to vote in this country at any election, and please don't ever forget that. It was the veterans who sacrificed many, many of their lives. I know this for a fact. We lost over 60,000 in Korea. We lost over 70,000 in Vietnam. I know this for a fact. My own brother was killed in action. I know what I'm saying. So please, have a respect for the veterans. And don't forget, it was the veterans who gave everyone in this room, everyone watching television, we gave you the right to vote, and no one will ever take that away. I would like to address my remarks now to the councilman who I listened to very, very carefully. You gave your report, and this is what you read, everyone here, you read that in 18 years you have given full support to all the activities in Highland Park. This is what you, this is what you read. But not once, not once in your report, did you ever mention that you give any kind of support to the veterans. And to me, and every veteran watching, this is open discrimination. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
I am not, Mayor, can I just say something?
Yes, please.
Not going to get into an argument about this, but fallen heroes way, that was my idea, and that's what we put together. We dedicated a whole street for that with a small park and a bench for reflections. I have provided more services for veterans and including them in just about every activity, even at the Doughboy. And this year is the first day that I've ever missed a Veterans Day in my entire time serving on this council. So I have provided above and beyond, in my capacity, services that included veterans here in Highland Park.
Okay.
Why didn't you mention that in your report?
Okay, Mr. Gross, thank you very much. I am sorry I did not mention that tonight, but I thank all veterans for all their services. Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Okay. All right, now, let's get on to the rest of the regular business. Clerk, can you please report on advertising boards, committees, and commissions ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park incorporating into Chapter 9 of the Code various boards, committees, and commissions in lieu of reconstituting said boards, committees, and commissions annually by resolution was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Any public hearing? All right, may I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to, and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, can you please report on advertising the property acquisition ordinance for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Ordinance of the Borough Council, the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, authorizing, one second, we're out of order. Wrong one. Right, acquisition, okay. Authorizing the adoption of a redevelopment plan for the property, no, it's the wrong one.
What were you doing?
Reading the wrong one. Ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park authorizing pursuant to NJSA 48:12-3, the acquisition of Block 173 Lots 41 to 49 and Block 89 Lot 13 on the tax map and appropriating the sum not to exceed $3,500,000 for said acquisitions, has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
I'll second.
Public hearing?
What properties are we talking about? Can you tell us the properties?
It's, yes. The, the lot, basically, I mentioned 101 Raritan, which is colloquially known as Bergen Auto, and it would basically authorize, it's not to say we are going to spend that amount of money, I want to be very clear, that is not the intention, to start negotiating acquisitions so that we can piece together. There's a, there's been a redevelopment concept there for a while, and it's basically so we can engage in negotiations when some of the existing property owners in that area. It was precipitated by the fact that the 101 was for sale. So that's kind of, that's the one we're focused on right now.
Okay. Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yeah, just to comment briefly, the confusion that people may be seeing is, this is an amendment to an ordinance that authorizes up to $3.5 million for all redevelopment projects that the borough might be engaged in. Even to spend $25 of that has to be introduced as an ordinance to amend the original, so it's titled as the original. There's confusion as to whether we're really spending $3.5 million on that property. The answer is absolutely not. It is significantly less than 10% of that. However, the flip side of it is, we've been working on redevelopment for years, and unless the borough has skin in the game, it goes nowhere. And the planning in these redevelopment projects is it becomes part of a larger redevelopment project, the developer takes over the payment of the, of the bond, and at most occasions, and this isn't, there's no negotiation of a redevelopment project yet, but in most cases, the redevelopers fall over backwards to do that, because our bond rate is 1 to 1.2% less than best market price, and when you're talking about a redevelopment project at $110 million, that 1% is a lot of money. I vote yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Thank you, Phil, that was a very good explanation. Yes, I vote yes, too.
Okay, clerk, can you please report on advertising 31 River Road redevelopment plan for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, authorizing the adoption of a redevelopment plan for the property 31 River Road, redevelopment area pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, NJSA 4812A-1, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any public hearing? May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution and advertise the ordinance on the final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
I just want to say, it's been at least a year since we began talking with the property owner and their first developer to create a viable project on this site. After the first developer left the table, we held several meetings with the neighbors to help define a new project considering mass, traffic, the impact on the existing homeowners. This redevelopment plan has been reviewed and approved by our planning board, and here tonight, approved by the governing body. Yes.
Clerk, can you report on advertising the water and sewer ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 328 Sewer and Water, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Any public hearing?
Need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, second?
Second.
Okay. Any public hearing? May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, may I have a motion to adopt items number 14 through number 27?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. We're moving into the second segment of public discussion at this point. Does anybody have anything they would like to address? Hi, please state your name and address.
Sure, Monique Coleman, 407 Lincoln Avenue. And I'm here tonight to air my personal experiences, which I'm very concerned about, with the HPPD's internal affairs complaint process. It raises some deeply troubling concerns that I.
Monique, speak a little louder, somebody said they can't hear you.
Okay. I am here to air my personal experiences with the HPPD's internal affairs complaint process. It raises some serious concerns that I feel that you all should be aware of and take action on regarding the integrity of this formal protocol provided for citizens who have a complaint against members of the HPPD. Now, I know earlier, Mayor, you mentioned incidents in the spring, this past spring, I'm going to name them, that it was my son, Amiri Tull, at 407 Lincoln Avenue, who was racially profiled by the HPPD. And even though it's been denied that that is exactly what it was, I'm here to state it and restate it, and I will continue to state it. Several months after my son was racially profiled as he walked back to our home on Lincoln Avenue after visiting with friends at the high school, on March 15th, I submitted an internal affairs complaint related to this incident of racial profiling and excessive policing. I felt that it was important for me to use this formal channel for reporting my grievance and having it fully investigated. I was told by the IA internal affairs officer that files are confidential, and that names and exactly what is, what is reported in the complaint are only unsealed under court order. Despite this assurance, and to my complete shock and dismay, within a week of the HPPD's receipt of my internal affairs complaint form, member or members of the HPPD breached the department's own confidentiality policy. How do I know this? Because the sole eyewitness of the incident who provided a statement for the complaint that I submitted was approached by a neighbor who indicated that their friend, who is an HPPD police officer, told the neighbor that the PD received my complaint. They knew who the eyewitness was, and the PD were suffering from low morale because of the details in the eyewitness's statements about the incident. Based on this conversation with the officer, that neighbor decided to approach the eyewitness about their statement, pressing them on whether they were sure about what they saw, specifically the part about the officer actually drawing out his gun before I approached and answered my door. Still, to this day, there has been no documentation to dispute that eyewitness statement. Certain specifics of the witness's statements continue to be pressed by this other neighbor. Needless to say, being confronted by another community member about a confidential eyewitness account of an internal affairs complaint is deeply disturbing and deeply shocking. Additionally, within that same week of my report being received, a councilperson and member of the Public Safety Committee informed another community member that he had heard that my, that he too had heard that my IA complaint was filed. This info was relayed to me. When I asked the councilperson how he found out I filed my report, he indicated that the Safety Committee received briefs about HPPD/IA reports, but without any particulars about the complaint. However, apparently enough information was revealed for at least one, possibly more members of the council to know that it was my complaint that was filed, many months after the actual incident. Lastly, in the same one-week timeframe from the time that I submitted my complaint, an HPPD car idled across the street from my house for a good 20 to 25 minutes one morning. After four and a half years of living on 407 Lincoln Avenue, I had never seen a police car choose to idle on that part of our street, not once, until the week after I submitted my internal affairs complaint. You can call me paranoid, you can call me reaching, but I know exactly what that was. It was intimidation. So I want to just quote here from the IA policy itself. "The progress of internal affairs investigations and all supporting materials are considered confidential information. All department employees are required to keep all aspects of any internal affairs case or investigation in strict confidence, whether involved in the investigation or not. This shall be construed as to prohibit any employee from revealing any information whatsoever, including, but not limited to, an employee's participation in an internal affairs interview, existence of an internal affairs investigation, the subject matter of an internal affairs investigation, the target of an internal affairs investigation, the identity of complainants or witnesses, and any other information related to an internal affairs investigation." In addition to what is stated in this policy, I was personally assured that internal affairs investigation case files are retained in locked cabinets in the office of the captain of police, that the files would clearly be marked as confidential and have restricted access. Again, quoting from the HPPD's own directive on professional standards related to internal affairs, quote, "Citizen confidence in the integrity of this department increases through the establishment of meaningful and effective complaint procedures. This confidence engenders community support for the department. Improving the relationship between employees and the citizens they serve facilitates cooperation vital to the department's ability to achieve its goals." I could not agree with this statement anymore. However, what happened to me was the exact opposite of what this policy states. It is clear that there was a violation here. Once again, my family was harmed, not only the initial incident and the denial of what it really was about. I had insult added to injury by the way that my own internal affairs complaint was clearly breached in multiple ways, and who knows how many other ways that I'm not aware of. Now, I'm not here to be enemies with the police, I'm not here to be enemies with anybody here, nobody wants that on their back, but I'm not going to sit back and knowingly be intimidated or have my investigation thwarted to continue to have. intimidated or have my investigation thwarted to continue to have, um, what happened to me and my family denied and still live in this town. So either we're going to have to have some serious beyond conversation, some serious policies and actions, acknowledgement of what we're dealing with, and deal with it, or you're going to lose someone here, and it could have been my son that day on March 15th. Nobody wants to acknowledge that, but it could have been.
Monique?
So I'm not gonna, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to play games here.
Right.
I'm here for some real action, and everybody here who spoke tonight and many others are serious, we're not backing down from this. I'm really bitter, I'm really angry, and yes, I'm infuriated, because this really took it to a whole nother level.
Right. Monique, I'm, I'm very dismayed. I'm really, really dismayed to hear this. Can I have a copy of that? Is that a copy?
You can have a copy of my statement, yes.
Yeah, I'd like that.
But I will also say that my, the resident who is the eyewitness in this account, I commend this person for allowing me to, um, present this information, air a public one, because I would not have done that without their approval. And, and they do not want any involvement in any further discussions about this. I'm putting it out there, it is the truth, but that person does not want to have any interaction with you or the police department or anyone else.
Okay, let, let me, I, I need that report. Um, I'm not happy to hear this. Um, I'm really sorry that you're still going through things like this. Um, and you and I have spoken, um, I don't know what to say to you about this situation, but I would like a copy of that report.
So what you could say, I mean, at this point, I'm thinking what, or my question is, what are you going to do about going forward, about making sure that policies and practices are fair and just so that we know there's legitimacy in this police department in this town?
So at, at this very second, I can't tell you exactly what I'm going to do, but there's clearly something that has to be addressed. To, to hear that an internal affairs report wa- is being talked about in town is not a good thing. It's not a good thing, and-
Neither is the fact that my son could have been harmed or killed through an interaction with the police department if I weren't home to prevent it, because he was seen as a suspect. He was considered a suspect.
Yeah.
Not because he just happened to be taken a picture of, because he was also black. That's why.
So, so-
And he didn't, he didn't seem to belong where he was.
Right.
So even though he walked through the front door of his own home, the police detective still decided to tell the, um, in the report that my son ran to the backyard. He didn't run to the backyard. So from day one, this whole case has been troubling.
Right.
So it's not just the violation of the complaint, it's from day one what happened, the way this was recorded, the way it was spun, the lies that were told about my son's actions and my actions from day one.
So, so, so listen. Nobody here can take back anything that happened in the past, but you yourself just said, so what are you going to do? And that's something that we have to address. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you can move that down.
Anna Puray, 344 Becker Street. Um, I'm here to lend my support to Monique Coleman. I think it's simply that, and, um, I'm sure everybody needs time to take in the gravity of what she has already with, and we will be expecting a response, and we will be expecting action. I, myself, I would like, in the process of hiring a new police chief, I'd like this person, the candidate, to see this statement that we'll communicate to you, hopefully, and, you know, to be asked, what would you do about this? I think this is, this is something we have on the table that needs to be resolved, these very grave accusations that, I mean, accusations, yeah. I mean, I think what Monique has reported is, is, is very grave and needs to be addressed immediately, has to become a priority, uh, for this board and for this town to address these things. I also want to just, um, say how much courage it takes to do this, what Monique has done after made to bear witness in this way, and how she has been made to relieve the trauma that her family experienced, and, um, how much weight is put on people of color, um, you know, to, to, you know, to make them do this, because if it's not in our face, we don't see it. And, you know, it's, it's, it takes a lot to push back against institutional racism because everybody wants it to go away. But guess what? It's not going to go away until we address it frontally, until we make everything possible for people to, um, to, to, to state what happens and until we, uh, they'll try to shut them down. I'm, I'm happy to live in a town where there's, um, people who lend, you know, who help Monique, come out, and I think without this support and those poor structures and some , uh, community groups that had been working on racism and, uh, other issues, I think that helps a little. And I'd like to see some institutional, you know, um, counterpart of that. Uh, I know that, um, the town has now two commissions that can address, um, these issues and these two commissions, and I just want them to, these commissions to have the tools and to have transparency, to have, um, inclusivity. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Please state your name and address.
Hi, Dan, uh, Dan Stern Cardinal, Harper Street. I don't often not really know what to say, um, but I'm kind of at a loss for words, so I'm just going to tell you what I think about all this, which, um, listening to what everyone's saying and reading the bias report and the information in here and the, the bias free commission stuff, um, my feeling, uh, as I'm sitting here is thinking that, uh, actions speak louder than words, and, um, you know, I'm here most meetings, and, uh, I think you're all trying to do the best job you can do, um, but based on what we're hearing versus what's getting done, what it seems like is that for one reason or another, um, y'all don't seem to care about this problem, honestly. Um, that's really what it sounds like, because, so we've been hearing tonight, um, you know, okay, we'll talk about it in January, yes, that's an important issue, we have to look into it, this is something we have to have a discussion about, we're going to look into with the new, uh, police chief and police captain. These are not new issues, and, uh, you know, it's been years that people have been asking for data, now we're going to get a report on data at some point in the new year that's just limited to a very specific set of data that's not going to tell the whole picture. At some point, you know, you've got to ask, what's the motivation? Is, is, do we not think there's a real big problem here, or do we think that, like, we get this commission, but this says nothing about police bias in it? Do we think that's going to solve the problem? Like, what's the motivation here?
Okay, so, so let me, let me address some of that. I, the biggest frustration to me about anything, about getting anything done here, is everything in government seems to take forever, forever. I, you know, as soon as, um, you know, Amiritha's situation occurred and people started coming out, and Jessica, I think, was the one who, uh, started talking about the stops, um, as soon as that happened, um, we, we wanted to go to an outside independent person. Anna, come on.
We pushed you on that. You did not suggest that. Do not take credit for, for that audit.
Okay, um, so as soon as that happened, we tried to find somebody who could be independent to look at the numbers. I cannot tell you how many times a week I am asking, when are we getting the reports back? The, the, the police had some, uh, data on computers that they gave to, um, to the company that's doing the analysis. Uh, just two days ago, I, I called him again to find out when we're getting the final report. I am hoping that he's going to deliver with this, um, as he said in the first quarter. I, I, it frustrates me too. Everything moves slowly. We're trying to do downtown development in one particular spot now, since I became mayor four years ago, and it's still not done. The, it, it is one of the most frustrating things, um, even in ordinance, or like the creation of this, um, commission that we want to have. You have to first do a first reading, which we did. Then you, then you do, yet can't do the second reading until how lo- how many meetings later?
The next week.
The next meeting, you ha- which is then two weeks later, you can do the second reading. Now we're talking, a- and that, so that means we'll be able to get this commission, no matter what's called, no matter what the initial objectives say, we'll get them going. In our meeting discussions, um, and you guys who are out there on this commission, Sonya, you're right over there, um, you know, we did talk about things other than what is just written in that, um, in that ordinance, right?
I'm not sure what's happening.
So it doesn't specifically say anything to do with analyzing, or, you know, talking about racism in the police department? I don't believe that's what you're telling me now. But we did talk about that, that that has to be addressed. So-
With, with respect, uh, Madam Mayor, that's my point. You talked about it, but it's not in the ordinance.
Yeah, so it, we, we said we're going to adjust that ordinance. Um, I, you know, and my impression was that at the original ordinance, once it was put together and given to the appropriate councilperson, that person would, you know, spoke to the commission, but maybe none of, you know, maybe that didn't happen, I don't know. But, uh, what I'm telling you is, things seem to take forever. It is extremely frustrating on many levels. So, yes, you, this is an issue that is important to everyone here, and, um, it, it, it's something we internally talk about all the time as well. You don't hear all our discussions, um, but, you know, and no one, no one is more frustrated about this than Councilwoman Foster Dublin, who's been working on it for many, many, many years. Um, so, so I hear you. I hear you, hey, but I want you to know, I completely understand the frustration because I live it.
What I think, uh, uh, my last, my last comment is I think, um, we don't like to hear acknowledgement that there's actually a problem here, which is something that over the last year no one's-
So, yeah, so, so, you know, let's, let's talk about the most recent information, the use of force report, okay? So I have, um, the chief and the lieutenant, and Lieutenant Hamill and Sergeant Cabello, and I have been meeting with Councilwoman Foster Dublin and Matt Hale almost on a daily basis as they analyze the numbers within their own department. And, um, a- and once we have that all figured out, we'll share it and, and all of that. But even if, even if the to- and we just said this the other day in the chief's office, even if the total number of use of force numbers excluding emotionally disturbed persons comes down to a total of nine, okay? And in those nine, the, uh, instances of African Americans versus Caucasians is so much higher, there's a problem. We know that. What, how, how do you address that problem? What is causing that problem? That's when I started talking to the AG's office.
There's a problem, right?
Uh, yeah, yeah, if, if the nu- even if the numbers are like tiny, like nine cases- And we said it as we sat in the chief's office. Excuse me?
Do you have a member of the public with a microphone?
Okay.
Yes, hi, uh, my name is Amir Al-Sayed, and, uh, I'm going just to briefly share, uh, my incident-
Can you talk a little bit louder?
Louder?
Put it down, put it, put it a little bit down to your mouth.
Uh, my name is Amir Al-Sayed, I live in 278 South Eleventh Avenue. Uh, I'm going to share an incident that happened to me with the police last week. Uh, I live in an apartment building that has, in my building, we have four apartments, two upstairs and two downstairs. I live upstairs. I was leaving the building, uh, towards my car to pick up my child from the library.
Mm-hmm.
And then I found the police car outside my building, and he approached me and he asked me, "Do you live here?" I said, "Yes." He said he received an, a call from here, from this building, from somebody who said there is, uh, somebody in-
From your apartment building, you mean?
From my building, yes, apartment building. Uh, somebody, uh, who said, "I'm on this call," a resident, he said. He placed a call to the police about, uh, somebody who is not supposed to be here. That was a police officer, what, what, this is what he told me. I said, "I live here," and I did not call the police, and I just came out from the building, and there is nothing upstairs, you know? Uh, I didn't see anybody who was not supposed to be there. And I attempted to go to my car. This is when the police asked me for my ID, and he took my car information, and he reported me as a suspect in question. So I heard him placing the report, like, we found the person in question. This is when I talked to him, and I said, "Why did you ask for my ID? I told you I live here." And I was doing my best to convince him. I was literally, you know, showing him my keys and pointing to my apartment, and I was saying, "My mom is upstairs now. I live here, I told you I live here."
Mm-hmm.
And I have seen a person like, uh, four or five minutes ago, somebody came to knock into my door, uh, one of the PCA, uh, NG, you know, person selling something. I spoke with her briefly, and she left. I was trying to convince him. He looked at my ID, he, he, he has, he was so convinced that I was the suspect to the extent that he didn't even look to the address. Uh, the address is in my ID. He was reporting me as a suspect while looking at my ID. At this moment, my, uh, my neighbor came out, and my neighbor who happened to be white, I'm the only black person in the building.
Mm-hmm.
So when my neighbor came out, uh, the police officer approached him differently. Uh, he was friendly with him, and he went to ask him, "Did you see the person and, and what happened?" And he had a little chat with my white neighbor, and at, uh, until that moment, I was the suspect, until my neighbor, my white neighbor, talked to me. This is when the police turned to me and asked me about the description of the person that I saw.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, before that, I was a suspect, uh, and another, another white neighbor came, and she talked to me. This is when the police was convinced at this very moment that I am not a suspect.
Mm-hmm.
I felt humiliated.
Mm-hmm.
I felt angry and mad, and, uh, there was no, for me, there was no any, um, reason for, I didn't show, other than my skin color, I didn't show any behavior that should be suspicious for him. The police, uh, to the best of my knowledge, my understanding, he did not have the description of the person who entered the building. So he can say, for example, "I receive a call of a white, of, of a black woman entering the building." He didn't know. I'm the only one who gave the description of the person, because my neighbor who, who placed the call, who called the police, did not see the person. He just looked through the door, and he said, "There was a person." He did not even give the police a description. So the police has in his mind, you know, that black woman is a suspect. He didn't have the description before that. I went back, I was so mad, so angry, and I forgot to mention, I requested from the police to leave to get my child. Uh, my daughter was waiting for me outside in the street in the library, and it was late, so I asked him if I can go to get my child. I mean, I was in a rush to get my child. He let me stay, stay until he talked with my neighbor, and this is how he clarified the situation after my two white neighbor talked to me. I was so mad and angry. After I get my, my, my daughter, I went to the police station, I spoke with one, I asked to speak with one of- I spoke with one, I asked to speak with one of the lieutenant, not to complain, and until this moment, I don't want to complain. Because I don't want, I don't, as a black woman, I don't want to be targeted by the police. I don't want my name to be anywhere in the record. I went, I went to speak with them friendly. I spoke with one of the officers, and I told him, "I want to share this incident that you can share with your colleagues, just to think about it, you know, before you shoot an innocent person because they are only black, because they need to think about it." I shared my story with them, and I was so mad, and so frustrated, and so angry. I feel, I felt so humiliated, and this is a typical, for me, I felt it, he cannot argue with me that this is, you know, he has no reason to suspect me and report me as a suspect other than because I'm black.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm sorry that you were made to feel this way. One thing that we can do is listen to the dispatch tape to hear, you know, how the person described you to the police officer that was called out, you know, meaning the person, there's a dispatcher who takes the calls from people, and then he or she is supposed to give as good a description of the person as possible. Let's start with that and hear where that--
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't get that. So, in my story, I am sharing the action with the police. The moment he saw me, and I was trying to convince him, "I live here, he reported me as a suspect."
Right, right, no, 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 let me finish. You know, so, number one is, is there a problem in how the dispatch is sending out information to the police? That's number one. Number two is, we can certainly review the tape, because they all wear cameras now. So we can certainly review the tape and see what he said, and if there is some corrective action that needs to be taken, it could be taken.
So I just want to make sure that you understand the situation. I left the same door--
Right.
--that my white neighbor--
Yeah, I'm hearing that.
Five minutes after me, I was a suspect, while my white neighbor, he did not approach him as a suspect, he did not, because he was white.
Well, unless, I don't know what the dispatcher told him to look for, is what I'm saying to you. The description, right.
So if I, if he saw my--
No, no, but let's verify the tape.
If I told him, "I live here," I told him, "I live here."
Right, no, 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 I'm hearing--
"This is my ID," and he still, so I don't know what the dispatcher--
So what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say to you is, I want, I, let's take a look at how the police officer addressed you, and if that needs, if he needs better training, he needs to get that. Or if he needs to be reprimanded for the way he handled it, we have to address that. But we can't do that without looking at the tape. That's what I'm saying.
So I just want to recommend, you and I, and everybody else, and even the police, they know, back in their mind, it's a culture. When there, whenever there's a crime scene, they look at the black person as a suspect.
Right.
So we all know that. So I hope we can change the mindset and the culture of the police.
Right.
That's my hoping.
Right.
I'm not calling for investigation. I don't want any investigation. I really, actually, when I went to the police department--
Yeah.
They offered me, they brought, they brought the form to my house. They came back and they sent the form to my house to file a complaint. I said, "No. Complaint or investigation is not going to change anything."
Right.
We need to change the mindset and the culture. And that's not going to be changed by report or who's wrong and who's right, and--
No, 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 that's, I'm not saying to look at the tapes for who's wrong and who's right. I'm just saying, we need to see how he conducted himself so that we can address his conduct. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying he was right or wrong, or you were right or wrong. I hear exactly what you're saying.
And also, there is one, there's one more thing. For, I understand for the police, they do have the right to, you know, to suspect anybody and ask them for their ID, and, you know, that's part of the job.
Right.
But what we need to change in their mind, this person doesn't have to be the black person all the time.
Right, yeah. Thank you.
I think it's really, oh, sorry--
Name and address.
Sonya Headlam at 133 Benner Street.
Can you talk a little closer?
It's not working.
I actually, I'm an opera singer, so if I can't fill the space, then I know something's wrong with the mic.
Okay.
So I just, I'm happy that we have other stories here tonight, because I think one of the problems is that people have had in their mind that the situation with Monique's family is some singular event that occurred, some random singular event, because we made all this progress, and now we live in this perfect bubble, and this, you know, these types of incidents don't occur in our neighborhood anymore. When the reality is, is that this is the reality for people of color, not just in this neighborhood, but across the nation.
Right.
And I myself have had, I've stood right here in front of this microphone and told a story of feeling physically intimidated by a Highland Park police officer at a community event, and have made it very clear that I will never send my son to that event ever, for the fear that because of his black skin, he could be looked at in an instant as a suspect, and what could possibly go wrong? It just, the, it just doesn't sit right with me.
Yeah.
So until there is a culture change, until I know that this type of training is occurring, then I can't trust that he or I or any person of color is really safe, truly safe, in this neighborhood. So I guess I want to just ask a couple questions. I wondered about the police accreditation program. How many, I just, I don't know if you know this, or if the police chief knows this, but how many New Jersey police departments are accredited?
I, I don't know--
Go ahead, go ahead.
I don't know how many departments are accredited, but I know that the insurance company that insures towns, that's one of the forward approach that they are going to. I know that there are many towns under the JIF, the Garden State JIF, or the different insurance companies that we use. They see this as a wonderful tool in police departments, and they are pushing this. We're hoping that our JIF will cover the cost of the training courses, but we know we're definitely going to go that route. But I can tell you a number of how many departments have gone that route.
I was just curious about that. I also wanted to ask if, I mean, we've talked, several people have brought up about the police chief position being open, and you talked a little bit about what that process is going to be like. I was wondering if we could get a commitment tonight from all of you to have more community involvement than just an announcement that people can send questions to the HRC. That is not enough. We want to be involved in this process, and I would like to hear a commitment that you guys will allow us to be involved in that process, at the table, looking at the resumes, at being able to ask questions, and being thoroughly involved and invested in the process. I would, I would love to hear from you right now, tonight, if that's something you can agree to.
So Ed, do you know what the state law is regarding that?
You can have community involvement, sure.
Thank you very much. So, we know that it's allowed.
All right, so Sonya--
And I would like to highly encourage, I think that we have shown that the community cares, and if you need us to rally more people, I'm here to keep doing it. I will keep ringing the bell and letting you all know how important this is.
Okay, so--
The time is of the essence, and we need to act now to make sure that we are at the table with you. The person that made, thank you for your statement about, why are we asking other police chiefs to do this work? It's a very good question, and anyway, I think there's a lot to be discussed in that avenue, and I just want to make it very clear here tonight, that this is what we are expecting, that we will be able to be involved.
Okay, so--
Because it does need to happen.
So, so let's put a discussion of that on our agenda for our next commission, I don't know whether it's going to be called, meeting, okay?
And one final kind of question is about the budget, because I assume you guys are working on budget for 2019. I'd like to know what budget has been allocated for training, police training, regarding implicit bias and de-escalation. I would like to know also if the commission will have a budget to be able to kind of do what work needs to be done, that, you know, that we hope to gather data and be able to analyze things also. So I think that that's my other question.
Okay, so as far as training goes, I know you have a budget number from 2018 for training, but I don't know--
I don't have it on the top of my head, unfortunately. As I mentioned earlier, we are going through, I think, Elsie, we have our budget meeting with Chief Risco this week, where we're going to be hashing it out, and this certainly would be something we'll talk about.
Right, I mean, I think that, again, it's clear, the community has spoken several times about this, this has been in the petitions that we've released, that we feel very strongly that the training that is, that is currently ongoing is not enough, and we need more, and we need training that is, that is going to actually, that is measurable, that we can actually say, we can, are looking at data, and we can see the results of that training.
Yeah.
All of this is very important, and one of, one of the things that I do want to say, we've had a lot of people talk about this kind of delay, you know, like, why hasn't anything been done? Why, why is it taking so long? And I think that everyone here, it's very clear, kind of where the egg is, right? Okay, it's very clear, I feel like, you know, let's not get caught in this situation again.
What do you mean, where the egg is? I don't know--
Egg, you know, this expression, "egg on your face."
Oh.
So it's kind of like, I feel like we've been talking about this issue, and it's really the report that is kind of putting pressure now, where people are trying to say, "Oh, we're responding, and we're doing this, we're doing that." But the reality is, is that there's no response. I mean, I'm sitting here and actually thinking in my head, I'm surprised the chief himself hasn't come up here to say anything. Like, it's silence, you know? We get all this data, a person in our, sorry, a person in our community prepared a report for us to share with people tonight, and the chief is sitting here quiet, I haven't heard anything. What do you have to say about this data? I think this is, I think this is really important, and, and, you know, it's like, and I'm, and I'm saying that because I don't think that I should even have to ask that. I think that our, our neighborhood, our police department, should have already been prepared to respond to this. If you guys had done what we asked you when we first came in here, you would have been prepared to respond to the force report, but you weren't. And so now, let's not get caught in this situation again.
Okay.
The time is now, and it's urgent.
Right.
Or else we will continue to be in this situation with egg on our face.
The chief is, the chief is going to speak in a second, I see. However, I do want to tell you that I think it was yesterday, Lieutenant Hamill gave me a copy of a report with some numbers on it, but I didn't want to discuss it till we had a chance. I wanted to look at the numbers.
But again, that was yesterday.
Yeah.
This is my point. That, that was yesterday.
Yes.
You are late. That's my point. You are way beyond late.
Okay.
And let's not let it happen again.
Well, Sonya--
Let's not let it happen again. Go ahead, chief.
Well, thank you very much for all coming out. When this report came out, I immediately contacted the mayor. I am concerned, as everyone else is, I was shocked by the numbers. We started looking into it, and some of it confuses me. There was a conference call with the Attorney General with all the police chiefs, I was on it, and what he basically said is what the mayor already, these are my notes from that phone call, what the mayor already said. He owns it. He, I think, as disturbing as it is, it's good that it came out, because it'll get the attention it needs, and hopefully we'll get the proper numbers, the proper context. I didn't know that some departments don't even use, fill out complete use-of-force forms for minor use-of-force. And if you look at ours, on a continuum of force, we're on the low level of hands and fists and compliance holds. There's even confusion in my department on when those are filled out. So, the data is not totally what it appears to be. What the Attorney General said, it's not apples to apples. Some departments do not even fill out the forms for the minor incidents. If we followed that, we probably have four uses of force, because I think we have four uses of pepper spray. We've had a taser for five, six years, we've never deployed it, although we probably could have in certain circumstances. I can assure you, no police officer worth his salt, that doesn't mean every police officer, but no one wants to go out and get into a scuffle, because you can get hurt, first of all, or worse, and anytime a scuffle happens, nothing good happens. Unfortunately, use of force is necessary at times. It's ugly, no matter how it happens, it's extremely ugly. All the officers I know try to avoid it. We're looking at our own stats to see how it measures up. What the Attorney General said, basically, is, he admits, it's not apples to apples. He's looking to record and report, looking to analyze, standardize, conceptualize the data. Once he does that, we'll take a look at it. I think the forms will be standard across the state, they'll be more detailed, and I am all for training. Again, I've developed my own training. Whatever is out there, we take advantage of, a lot of it's free, a lot of it isn't. I would suggest strongly that perhaps you level some of your concerns to the Attorney General's office as far as training, because the training comes from the state and the county generally, and then we will send their officers to it. If it's free, it's better, but we certainly are not against training, and I am not against open communication. But there is some concern with the context of the numbers. Another thing we found out was, in our numbers, they included the EDPs and people under influence.
Explain to them what EDPs is.
Emotionally disturbed persons. I can give you an example of one case where three uses-of-force forms were filled out, because an individual had a, had a mental problem, and he called, the call was, he had a gun, they go into an apartment complex, he has it, has something behind his back, and I watched it on video, and they're telling him, "Please show your hands, show your hands." They're begging this guy, and thankfully, he didn't move quickly, because it could have ended, ended up very tragic. One of our officers snuck down the stairway, came up the other stairway while they held him at bay, and trying to talk to him, and she tackled him, and they all jumped on him, and they subsequently arrested him, sent him to, for psychiatric help. There were no injuries to him, but there was a concussion to our officer. If you look at the stats, it's interesting, where the defendants that we do arrest, the rate of their being injured is much lower than state average, and in fact, it appears that more of our officers are injured when we use force. So we are concerned. I think, I'd like to see what the Attorney General's office comes out with to try to remedy this problem, standardize it, and we take it very seriously. But there is some flaws in the reporting. Sergeant Cabello contacted the ledger, and I think they were supposed to make some corrections with it, they agreed with it. They probably had thousands and thousands of forms, so they made some mistakes here and there. But it's something that we take a serious look at, and I'm sure that the people that succeed me, because I know who they are, who's up for the position, they will take it just as seriously. So that's what I have to say on it, I'm hoping the AG moves quickly.
Hi, my name is Ellen Witt, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can't tell. And I live at 20 South First Avenue. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that the Attorney General, of course, owned it. He decided to own it, and I think Highland Park has to also decide to own it, not simply look at more statistics and get revised revisions on the report. I'm very concerned about the current process to review complaints made about the Highland Park Police, and as Monique Coleman explained, of course, we had an incident last spring where a black teenager was assumed to be a potential criminal without any shred of evidence. teenager was assumed to be a potential criminal without any shred of evidence. And in the aftermath of this incident, I won't review the whole incident again, but the police and the council refused to recognize the incident as racial profiling. And instead, after a complaint was filed with the police and details of the confidential process were leaked, individuals were, an individual pressured a witness to change her story, and the police found themselves not guilty. I think that's what the outcome of the whole thing was, near as I can tell, in the complaint process. This outcome was not really a surprise. There have been, at least 12 other complaints have been filed since 2010 with some disparity issues, and in every case, the police reviewed the police and the police found the police not guilty. This process is broken, it has lost its legitimacy, and the police should not be simply asked to police themselves. I think what is needed is, we really need an independent process where people can air and review and address complaints. That should be established. And people need confidence that they can raise a complaint without fear of retaliation, as was pointed out tonight. People fear that now, so you don't hear all the complaints. And issues of racial profiling need to be brought out into the open. As a member of the ACLU People Power, I was among those who reviewed the data from police records that we operated. And I learned that police, on their own, or at the request of a resident, but they still, the police, had stopped a number of people to question them. What made them suspicious? Well, they were talking on a cellphone next to a car while black, they were sitting in a park while black, they were swinging on swings while black, they were doing jumping jacks while black, or they were taking a photo while black, or apparently, they were just living in an apartment while black. And so, that's the kind of thing that comes up on some of these reports, and police are then questioning, getting IDs, intimidating people in the process. I suspect if there were actually an independent means to actually complain, an independent complaint process, we would actually know of a lot more of these kinds of complaints, because most people just live with that and don't complain. So, I think that knowing this really should motivate us to review police procedures and racial profiling issues, and I think it is time for an independent review of complaints. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Abby, I live on Harper Street. So, one thing I just wanted to add to something I was going to say is that I'm a little concerned about the response to the data, saying that we have to relook at it. Of course, we always have to relook at data, there's always, you know, refining that can be done, but the point is, 51% more, 1.5 times, a black person was 1.5 times more likely to have force used against them when arrested. That means, one or two, you know, reports aren't going to affect that 150% rate. Also, saying, "Okay, we have to standardize the forms," I totally agree, that's great, but just because we may be reported more doesn't mean we should discount what has been reported. So, that's one thing I was going to add.
So, Abby, you know, as I said before, even though the numbers may be small, we recognize that there's a disproportionate number of black people that had the use of force on them. And, you know, we talked about that in the chief's office the other day.
I appreciate that. I'm just responding to the Attorney General report that you read specifically and a statement that was just made. So, with regards to what can actually be done regarding the issues that are discussed, that were discussed today, I'd like to discuss the anonymous complaint process, which is one of the possible measures that has been brought up by the Bias Free Group. Everyone here likes to complain about the website, I've brought it up myself a number of times, it comes up at almost every meeting. We've discussed many times that there are plans for a new website in the new year. As you guys know, I'm on the Public Information Committee, and I believe the point of this committee is to provide oversight of communications, but as you said, it's very difficult to get anything done even when on a committee. However, I have asked many times at this point, and I think, Teri, you know, I've brought up having an anonymous complaint process available on the website. The current option to report a complaint on the website is extremely cumbersome and it cannot be anonymous. I was told that it's possible to have an anonymous option with the new website, but ultimately, I was told that it's up to you guys and that you would make that decision. So, given what's going on and the statements today, I would ask to hear whether that's something that you're committed to establishing on the new website and what the timeframe is for that, and also, who would be vetting those complaints and making sure that they get to the appropriate person.
So, you know, I agree that I think we have to have a way for people to report something anonymously, but we have to have someone who's going to be at the end of that, who's going to be able to take those complaints to the proper people, and also to vet that the complaints are residents from Highland Park, or if they're not, you know, get other information so we can, you know, verify some things. But that's a process that we-
That's the issue. Having the ability to verify that they're a resident of Highland Park means you're going to want their name, their email, their location.
Not in the, you know, initial response thing. I mean, this is a whole new concept and we need to work it through. But I agree with you, we need to find a way to be able to have anonymous reporting, whether it's through our website or some way, we have to look into that, I agree.
Okay.
Hi, please state your name and address.
Hi, excuse me. My name is Mike, I live on South Adelaide Ave.
Mike, what's your last name, please?
Noss, N-O-S-S. I'm a recent resident, I just recently moved here. So, first off, I just wanted to introduce myself, want to say hi.
Well, welcome, Mike.
So, you know, a lot of random things I want to talk about, hopefully it won't take too long, I apologize if I do. Feel free to, you know, motion your knee off stage, grab a hook or whatever if I'm taking too long talking up here. First, you know, again, I want to introduce myself. Before moving here, I was very excited to move here. I'm still very excited to be living here, I've got family and friends who live here, and, you know, I've always only heard wonderful things about Highland Park prior to moving here. That being said, I do want to thank all of you for all that you've been doing for as long as you've been doing it. The police chief, I would like to thank you for all of your hard work as well. I'd like to thank everyone here for being here, you know, I've been told that this is one of the most attended nights in recent history. So, I appreciate that this is a community that, you know, everyone feels comfortable, who is currently here, feels comfortable coming here, and especially those who are expressing themselves as they've expressed themselves. You know, we've heard many heart-wrenching stories and anecdotes tonight that, you know, concern me as a new resident. I'd like to come to Highland Park as a new resident with the intention of being kept here as a resident by actions and policies that I can now see from the inside, performed by those of you on the council and those within the police department. To kind of reiterate some of the things that have been said tonight, a lot of what I've been hearing has been a lot of talk. I would like to see action items. These are things that we are going to do. I would like to see deliverables. This is what you will get. You mentioned recently making a call, Mayor, to get a report a couple days ago. Is there a deadline? Do we have deadlines in place? Are there consequences for reaching that deadline? What are the deliverables that you can provide to us for, you know, this committee not giving you the report on time? What is the follow-through? And how can we hold you accountable, not just you specifically, but you as a council, you as a police department, us as residents, how can we hold each other accountable? You know, I think having action items, deliverables, and deadlines transparently broadcasted is a fantastic way to do that. I, again, as a new resident to Highland Park, especially one who is white, I'm not in a position to comment on racial bias within this community. Looking at the force report, there is one statistic here that jumps out at me, and I'm merely asking questions, I would love information to be shared. Police chief, thank you for coming up here and sharing the information you did share moments ago, I do appreciate that. You know, if you'd like to come up and answer any of my questions, I happily welcome you to. This one comment here, "If Highland Park instituted a system to flag officers for review, similar to that in Chicago, 10 of our officers would be flagged for review. Under New York City's system for flagging problematic officers, nine officers would be flagged." My question, you know, this has nothing to do with racial bias, but my question is, is this going on because of the inconsistent way force is being reported within our department compared to other departments? Are our standards lower than New York or Chicago? You know, I heard what you said, I'm sorry, what's your name? Police chief? Yes, here.
Chief Frisco.
Chief Frisco, again, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I lost my train of thought there a second.
The comparison to New York or something?
Right, right, sorry, thank you. You know, is it that, you know, these 10 or nine officers, they're documenting every little thing that's being done for use of force? Or, you know, how is this comparing between these cities that are clearly very, you know, high-profile in what they do? You know, is there any action item, any deliverable that, and any deadline that is being done to address, you know, these numbers here? And again, I understand that, you know, the data is the data, it can be manipulated and interpreted in different ways, you know, I'm asking for this interpretation, you know. This is, from my understanding, a minimum threshold that we're talking about. This isn't massaging the numbers in any different way, you know. I'm asking, is it because of how we are, you know, inconsistently reporting uses of force across the board?
Just come up to the mic.
Please, thank you.
I really can't comment on Chicago or New York, I don't, I really don't know their practices. In New Jersey, again, with our new AG in place, he has mandated that every police department purchase software for what's called a Guardian Tracking System, and now, officers are tracked on different things, good things, use of force, IAs, among other, I don't know if there's about a dozen things that we keep track of, and the purpose of it is an early warning system. If you get too many of one thing, you want to take a look and examine why that may be happening. It may be legitimate, it may not be. But we, prior to that, we did not have anything in place formally, so that is something new, and when this report came out, the timeframe of this report, we did not have this in the state of New Jersey. This is relatively new from, I believe, this springtime. So, we do have something in place now, but unfortunately, it doesn't cover, well, I just did, the Guardian Tracking System. So, it's different things, again, good and bad, tracks the officer's behavior, how many IAs, how many uses of force. I don't have it memorized as a checklist, we can add things, we can't delete, there's a minimum amount, but we can add. And it's a relatively new system, I said it's in effect for the state since the springtime. So, the AG's office did a very good thing there and we think that'll be a valuable tool for us.
That's awesome, thank you. While I have you up here, if you don't mind, just one more question, I'm sorry to beat a dead horse here, you know. Should any of these, you know, notifications or flags, you know, be worthy of investigation? And I'm just merely asking questions as a new resident to Highland Park, I'm curious, what is the police department's protocol for addressing police officers that have, you know, flags on them for use of force?
Again, this is uncharted territory. If we see abnormal use compared to the other officers or compared to what the average may come out to with the AG's office, we would take a look at why, each situation is different, we look at all the corresponding paperwork. Right now, we have the advantage of having body cameras and car cameras, which we didn't during that. So, any use of force, we can review, it's being saved and certainly is applicable. So, we have, we have better equipment in place, better tools to monitor officers.
That's good.
And it works to, if we need to take disciplinary action, or perhaps they could be exonerated, but we have better tools in place at this point.
So, I guess if I may, what I'm hoping to get from you is what some of that disciplinary action looks like.
It looks like, from a counseling sheet to termination, depending on the incident.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. I think that's about all, I think I've stood up here enough, but thank you again, everyone.
You're welcome.
Tina Weiss House, is this working?
Yes, well, I can, is she's another now?
143 North Fifth Avenue. So, I want to come back to community input for the hiring of the next police chief. And I don't know how far along you are in the process, and I don't know what the timetable is. And I'm concerned that maybe you are further along and the issue of agreement from the council that we get community to the table will be put off before it is meaningful. Gail, you said you'll talk about it at the next commission meeting, then we have a reorganization meeting in January, and we have a plastic ordinance thing, and-
So, let me tell you what the timetable is. The chief will be retiring on April, oh, April 1st? Yeah, April 1st. And so, Elsie, do you want to talk to the process at all?
Yes. December 3rd, we met with the police department and we told them that there is an opportunity that we will be looking for a chief and a captain. And we told them in what capacity, that it will be an acting chief and an acting captain, and that they are, they are welcome to submit application for those who are interested. There is a deadline when the applications will be received, and then that cuts it off. We have not gone to that deadline yet, so we're still collecting all the applications from the, from the police department. So, we're accepting, so there's no process, we haven't started any interviewing, we haven't started reviewing any applications as yet, so it's very much in its infancy stages of collecting the data. And if the opportunity comes where members of the public is invited to sit in on this interview, you would, it would just be, right now, we're just collecting data, we're just collecting persons who are intent, who have intent to interview for either police chief or police captain. So, we haven't finished, we just started the process, accepting applications in.
Let me elaborate a little bit on that. So, so we, as Elsie said, we notified the police department that we had the two positions open and that we were going to go through several stages of testing, which, right now, I believe they're in the process of studying for the initial test. The people who are applying have, are studying for the initial test, which I believe is a verbal-
Verbal, it's-
Yeah, go ahead.
So, it's oral exam. So, I've been the one kind of playing intermediary with the people we're working with. So, we, the resumes of the interested candidates are in, the deadlines for that has passed. Now, there's a, basically a two-month study period, so that's starting in, we're still scheduling the date for oral exams, and this will be covering very technical law-related areas, will happen with the review of this committee of this Chiefs Association. Then, the people who score 70% or better on the oral exam will be invited to take an essay exam that they'll have about two to three weeks to complete. That will be scored, and then they'll be in an interview process then with the Public Safety Committee, the candidates that kind of, they'll be ranked by, we're looking for this outside support on some of this kind of basic stuff. And then, Public Safety Committee led by Elsie will have the opportunity to interview the candidates and ask them questions about their essay responses, et cetera, and then the expectation would be, a selection would be made of them.
Well, then, let me elaborate a little-
Wait, is it a skip something?
Yeah, well, you know, the, let me-
I feel like it's, I don't know, the horse has left the barn already or something. I never hired-
Do you want me, do you want me to finish what you-
No, I actually...
Okay, you got it. You got it.
I got it. I mean, you already have the resumes and, I never hired a police chief. I, I, you're hiring from within. You're not doing a search, right, beyond the department? You've already got the resumes. I don't know. It would seem to me you'd have to stop. We're asking for community input. We, I don't, I don't know. I mean, Darcy is in the audience. She does a comparable thing with the Board of Education. I feel like somebody, I don't know, I'm not the one, that I understand you have testing and it's somewhat, you, there's different criteria and measurement standards, and they have to pass different things. Like I say, I don't know what that is. But I feel like there should be a pause button, because there is this situation, and there, where the community is saying, "We want to be at the table." And it sounds like it's not a table that we're at. And then there should be some discussion about how the community gets to the table right now. And I feel like I need help with that, because I have no idea how to do that.
Okay, so this is, this is the first time we've, I've ever been involved in hiring a chief. I know Elsie has been involved before in hiring a chief. So we're trying to find out what...
Thank you, Mayor. Let me address that. I've been involved in the hiring of a number of police departments, the certification of a number of police departments. As most of you know, that's my area of practice that I've specialized in for a number of years. Statutory authority governs the selection of a police department leadership. We have to follow that, and then sprinkle into that as much as we can, public, public participation. I know that most departments have no part, no public participation. Usually, who gets the job is a done deal. In the sex, in the areas where police departments are certified, they have to run their hiring practices for all supervisory through the International Chiefs of Police Association, because they are the ones who set the guidelines for testing. And everybody says, "Well, they're just a bunch of chiefs of police." I've never seen a more rigorous group of people throw them out because they know they're being watched for that. But my suggestion is, I think that, given that we have a lot more of a process than most do, and are trying to coordinate it, I don't disagree that it needs to be, we need to know from the get-go what it is. And right now, we haven't gotten the borough attorney's opinion. I only have mine. And I think it's appropriate to have the borough attorney check the statutes. Also, check with the liaison to the organization as well, to get that cleared up and get us information, hopefully, right around the time of reorganization, so that as we set forth in January doing the process. We're doing it right, and we have the public input as much as is appropriate. But I do point out, first to go back to where I started, the state statute governs the appointment of a police chief.
But the lawyer said, "Sure, you can have community input," right? Didn't you say that like very...
That's correct, but, but...
So, I don't know. I mean, you were very straightforward about saying that.
You can have community input at some level as part of the process. But the process is laid out very clearly under Title 40 about how you promote to the position of chief, captain, and the other senior officers. The promotion has to occur under New Jersey law from within the department, okay? That's the starting point. That's how it works. And, and we can't change that. The public can't change that. That's exactly how it works. So I will lay out an outline, which we could share with you, about the statutory process, which is very clear under New Jersey law.
Okay, so we're community involvement and transparency, okay? So transparency as well as, so, okay, I don't know, but we got information.
Hello, I'm Sophia McDermott Hughes. I live on South Third. First, I'd like to address, I've heard a lot, both from the police chief and the council, talking about how Highland Park is better than other communities. Maybe our numbers are, you know, seem worse than other New Jersey towns because we keep better records. And that's great. I'm hap, you know, it's great that we take such meticulous records. But it doesn't matter if we're better or worse than other towns. The data still is that 51% of African, that African-Americans are 51% more likely to have use of force, have force used upon them in arrests. That is the data, and it doesn't matter how you compare it to other towns in the country or in New Jersey. There is racial profiling, as we've seen, both with the ASLU data and now with NewJersey.com's data. So, I'd like to lay that out there. I'll also, with the Bias Free Committee, as being established or whatever it ends up being called, I just would like, I think that it's very important that there's a student representative on there. I know what the last time, you know, the last meeting where there was like a lot of community involvement after the Amir incident, the council continually throughout the entire time talked about how students are the future, and the youth are going to change everything. And, you know, we should just lay it on the youth. And yet, when you have an opportunity to actually involve the youth of Highland Park in, you know, reforming or having some say in government, in, you know, this important role, it's left out. So that's a little concerning.
Sophia, I think that's a great idea.
Right.
And we would have to, again, amend the ordinance to include a high school student.
Thank you. And I'd like to echo the opinions of people who've spoken before. I think it's very important that you have as much community transparency, especially, I think it would be great if this new commission were, could participate in the interview process or however much they're legally able to, and actually show that beyond just words, beyond creating a committee of understanding and saying that youth are the future, that this council is actually willing to have change happen, and actually listen to community demands and have community directly be able to affect the police department and have change.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
I'm Greg McClendon, River Road, also pastor of the Wings of Faith Church on Montgomery Street, I'm sorry. Just wanted to say really quick, I mean, I've heard so much tonight, and I can completely say I'm disturbed. Not as much by the police department as a whole, but by the things that I'm hearing as far as how we're handling. The young ladies that came in were sharing, I'm not gonna say stonewalled, but things are brought to the council and they're not addressed. And that's what I've, just in a short amount of time. I'm personal friends with our chief, good guy. Steve is a great guy, Sergeant Cabello. I can just shout out the names, Lieutenant Pellechella, great, great people. I've known them since childhood. I grew up here in Highland Park. Was out of town for a bit, but I'm back now. And ain't gonna be totally involved. I decided that tonight, listening, with a new chief coming in, it's important, without a shadow of a doubt. I know the attorney has spoken, I know, I'm not sure your name, councilman, but you have a stake in this. Also, Councilwoman Dublin also is a part of that. But I understand the process of how chiefs and all work very closely with police departments throughout the state of New Jersey and New York. But I'm concerned with, and I've said this to chief off the record, the next regime that comes in. We've made a lot of changes in Highland Park. Highland Park had a name. You could actually go, there's roads that you go around not to come through Raritan Avenue. That's, that's the element in the room. And we know it, and that's what it's been. I'm disturbed by, I'm sorry, Monique's situation. I am really, really disturbed by that. And I'll talk to you off, because not only the statutory general's office need to be involved, but others, because what happens in a situation like this, and this is what's a detriment, that a police officer has a few seconds when he draws his weapon to release that chamber, and someone's gone. A life is gone. I never take away, I've done the simulator course, course to the state of New Jersey, state police, and I understand you have a couple of seconds to react, and your life can depend on it. These guys and women, women and men need to go, they want to go home to their families end of the day. But if you put in a position where a call comes through, whether it's anonymous or whatever, and we make mistakes, what I'm disturbed with is if a report, you don't see the kid running to the back of the house and you put that in a report, and there's a witness that says it didn't happen. Something needs to be done, period. Because we have a community, a great community, and like I said, from a kid up, I just don't want to see this type, these type of things happen. I'm involved from a chaplaincy standpoint. I'm actually a coordinator for the, the whole region, area. And I get calls all times of the night, and I wouldn't even go into the things I've seen and I've heard. But I don't want that to happen in this town. Don't want it to happen in this town, because I know the men and women that are on the department. Personal stake, personal friends. But you have just a couple of seconds to make a decision. And God forbid, if our son would have made the wrong move, that officer's, he's thinking, he has to, and what would you do? And I ask myself that question. But I just can't fathom. I sat here and I just scratched my head over and over again. We have to come up with a solution. We have to be involved in the next chief that comes on. I pretty much know the ideology and the structure that Chief Steve tries to abide by. I mean, he has officers out there. He can't be with them 24/7. However, when he retires, there's a whole new group coming up. I know a few of the sergeants, a few of the patrolmen, but most of them I really don't know. I'm getting to know them now. I do a lot of stuff in the borough, do a lot with the police department. And I'm getting to know them. But I don't know the temperament. I don't know where they're from. I will say this, a month ago, we lost one of our Highland Parkers. We lost a few, but this one in particular was Tyrone Harris. And it was amazing what the chief, and I called in, and I was gonna make this big thing, and I said, you know, never lay low on it. But he, we don't have that many officers on him, but he sent over four police officers, two cars, and we need those in the borough. And I guess I should say this publicly, but he did. And they came over, and I could, and it touched me, because New Brunswick sent a bunch, Franklin Township sent a bunch, but Highland Park was present. And that, that did a lot. That, that made an impact. That type of community service, community policing, that type of care, I could walk in tomorrow morning to his office, pass dispatch, go right to Gary's office here, Sergeant Cabello's office, anytime, and I know that. That means nothing when we have a situation like this, where you go through and you're getting this, and we have to come up with a plan. So, this is what I'd like to say. As much as we possibly can, must retain or get back that trust of the community in that we're involved in. I was surprised to hear the councilwoman say that the resumes were in for the, for the police. It doesn't take rocket science to figure out the top tier of the police department, who can actually apply and who can't. So we, I kind of already know who's already applied. But the community should know the jackets, should know what the background, what incidents. So when the process, I mean, orally, I could probably get up and do well on the oral presentation, but I could stink in the back. I mean, I could, I could, you know, so there's a lot at stake. Business usual cannot be, because these guys, I know, they'll talk among themselves, off the record, what do you think? They bounce stuff off each other. What do you think we should do, how we should do? The next group, closed door, I just don't know, and I'm worried. I'm worried for our young people. I'm worried for our town. I'm worried. And I'm not saying we have bad apples there, but you know the adage, one bad apple spoils the whole bunch. Now, it's a shame that they all have to sit and hear this and feel, you know, some kind of way. But something has to be done, even with the officer that was involved. I mean, I, I, I don't want to publicly ridicule anyone, but I do know that it has to be a public situation, and it should be open so that folks actually see what transpired. Because based on what I see here, no, these folks are not going away. And by here, she was very, very upset. Mayor, I appreciate all the work you do. You're a great, great mayor. But even that dialogue that I saw between the two made me very, very uncomfortable, because asking a question, I'm not getting a clear answer. I didn't get a clear answer. I never understood what the answer was as you were going on. And we need a clear answer. This is the question, what's the answer? As opposed to saying, "Next meeting we'll do it." Agenda, protocol, government runs slow. These things must stop. We need to be more personal.
So Pastor, tell me what question you have you didn't get a clear answer on?
This whole night has been...
No, 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 that's hard to answer. How do, how do I answer that?
I didn't expect applause, but I'll be totally honest with you. I sat there, and I was just, I couldn't believe what I was, because I never, let us be, I'll just be real, just upfront. The elephant is in the room. There is a problem.
Right.
Now, if you ask me the question, is the bias in the department, I will stand here under oath and say absolutely unequivocally, no, never. But then, you peel everything back, you said something that really was remarkable in my mind, that if one incident, based on the ratio, based on the stats, if it's, if it's, if it's a situation where there's, it's imbalance, an imbalance with African-Americans being arrested or forced, there's a problem.
Right.
That's so true. The problem is across the country. What we're finding is the restraint some of the officers have. As Chief said, some of his officers are getting hurt applying force. But in other departments, we see every day, they're not, they're dying, they're not going home. So the mindset of the African-American is that, as the young lady said earlier, that you're already guilty before you get to the scene.
Right.
And if I tell you situations myself, I've dressed down, not just in Highland Park and other places, you feel it. You get in an elevator, you feel it. You just, you just there. And outside in my secular, I'm in a high position, if you want to put it that way, and I get it now. So you walk into the boardroom, you feel it. So you kind of just kind of say, "This is the way life goes." But I also have two college-age sons, and I worry to death
Right.
when they're driving.
Right.
You know, I'm not there. It's the mentality, it's the culture, and in this borough, of which I love, grew up here, we must do something. We can't let this thing blow out of proportion, and we can't make the citizens and taxpayers made to feel like your concerns are not valid, and we'll get to it next week, or we'll get to it that. This has gone on too long, absolutely too long. I remember last year, we talked about this earlier, and it's just too long. I thought it was resolved by now. I'm sitting here now, and I'm like, what is going on? It's, now, from your vantage point, you may not see it, but I'm not involved on the day-to-day like you all are. But this is unacceptable.
Yeah, I know. I, I, I hear what you're saying about the time issue and, and...
What do we do, Mayor? What do we do?
Yeah, so, right, so... So I, you know, I, I'm almost at a loss. I, who said before, "I'm never at a loss for words, but I'm kind of at a loss for words"? You know, I, I don't know how more I can tell you that my frustration with this. And maybe we don't wait for the reports to come back. And maybe, you know, maybe we take what the analysis of the use of force numbers that your department put together, and we look at those and not wait for somebody else to study them. And maybe... And, and so, and maybe we then sit together with our new commission, whatever they wind up being called, and work out a plan for, for addressing this. I know that the chief, the department has worked with Noble in the past, the, with, the Black... Yeah, so the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Officers. So maybe we can work with them. They'll come in at any time, right, to work with us?
We've had them twice for training, and I'm sure if we reach out, we could probably make another date with them.
So, so...
Excuse me, Mayor. I have been in contact with them.
Okay, great. And, and, so, so, you know, okay, so maybe we don't finalize all the numbers, have, have an independent person check all the numbers. Maybe we take what we have that they have prepared, because we've been working on those numbers now. Maybe we take what we have, um, that they have prepared because we've been working on those numbers now every day since that report came out. Um, and let's, let's, I see, I see head shaking, that's really good. Um, and let's start with that and let's, at our next meeting, Lucinda and Julie's not here anymore and Sonia, you're here someplace. Um, let's make sure that we put up some kind of plan together on how we can address this, okay?
Hello.
State your name and address, please.
I will. Uh, so I just want to be very quick. My name is Darcy Simorusti. Um, as some of you know, I am the president of the Highland Park Board of Education. I am not here in that capacity at all tonight, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, I'm just here as a private citizen. But I do want to talk a little bit about my experience as a board member in our search process because I do think it's relevant. And I think the, the concern that you're hearing expressed tonight in regards to this search is the lack of transparency up until this point right now and how far the process has already gone before the public in general was aware of what's going on. Um, what we found in our last search, um, after what many of us know was a debacle of a situation that we had going on, um, in the schools. We started the process with that transparency, went out to the community, asked the community, what do you want in your next superintendent? I think that's the piece that's missing here. Is the council and you, Madam Mayor, going out to the community and saying, what are you looking for in our next police chief? So that when you're going into those interviews, you have that information to rely on. That's the information we relied on when we conducted interviews and we could ask questions of candidates based on that input that we had gotten. If you go into this process without that, I think the fear that everyone in the room has is their voices are going to be completely lost in this process. And instead of the council and you, Madam Mayor, coming to the community and saying, here's what we're doing, here's how we're going to include you in the process, the community is having to come to you and say, how can we help? What can we do? How can we be involved? So, I, I, my suggestion would be to, to flip that back around and to come back in the new year and say, here's the process we're going to put in place. And I fully understand you guys are bound by different statutes and different regulations and have different ways that you have to conduct it. But, and we were by separate ones. But what we found ourselves doing was trying to push it as far as we could in a direction towards transparency and openness. At the end, we had community members come in and sit and they got to interview the two final candidates. So, there are ways that you can open the process, I don't know what, that we were able to open the process, I don't know what ways you can open the process, but I think all of your questions to your attorney and to the Chiefs Association or whoever else is, how open can we make this?
And that's what we'll hear on, uh, tomorrow. You'll, you'll get, thank you. Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Matthew Hirsch, 333 Felton Avenue here in Highland Park. Uh, thank you for hearing the, the, the public tonight. I think, you know, having been on both sides, um, I, I think that one, you know, presented with, with this issue in the mindset that we have to fix it is probably not necessarily the most constructive way to approach the situation. I think it's really rethinking what public safety means, what it means to be safe, uh, in, in, in Highland Park. I think there does need to be a fundamental rethinking of what safety actually means for residents, uh, both, both inside and, and, both, both inside Highland Park and also outside and for, for, for people passing through. And I'll just, I'll just say, just because it was an experience that, that, that I had, I was on a, um, I was on a webinar with the Center for Cooperative Media at Montclair State and they had Stephen Sterling, who was actually one of the data reporters from the force report, um, uh, from Ledger. And, you know, he readily acknowledged that there was no uniform standard to, to assess these data. And he understood that there was, you know, that, that, that there were many ways to interpret the data and that there were inconsistencies and that the paperwork that they got from the various police departments differed. Some, some police departments were, you know, counted more, some police departments counted less, they had different standards. So I think what you saw from the AG's office was an acknowledgement that there needs to be a uniform standard so we, so, so, so the state can adequately address and assess, um, uh, use of force data and, you know, racial profiling and disparities in, 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 in policing. But the one thing that he did say though, that resonated with me and perhaps, um, um, you know, with, with anybody here is that, is that, um. I wouldn't look at the data even as, 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 as a confirmation of something, but rather as a way to. See, I might have lost some words. I would look at a data, I would look at the data as, as, as a means to spur policy into action. Clearly, these are not equitable, equitable numbers that we're looking at, no matter how they're read. You know, it's, it is, it is, there, there are inconsistencies across the board, but I think even looking at Highland Park, very clearly, there is, and, there, there's an inequitable issue at play when it comes to, when it comes to our policing. And very likely, if we had, if we could quantify it, how, how all our municipal agencies, uh, 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 act. Um, it happens in, you know, it happens in the schools too. I mean, it's, and it's been a long discussion. It makes our agencies stronger, it makes our residents stronger, it makes the police stronger. Uh, so I would really start with that rather than just a quick fix it. Um, and hopefully that can be, and, and, and hopefully opening up the discussion is a central point of this and not just in the committees, but forums in a very open and public process. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Again, I'm Sophia McDermott Hughes, I live on South there. Um, so Mayor, thank you so much for, um, admitting that there's a problem, that we have a racial profiling problem in Highland Park. I'd just like to now, uh, address the chief. And after seeing the ACLU, uh, report around six months ago, after the NewJersey.com report and after working on the force for 33 years, can you admit, however small, that there is a problem with racial profiling in the Highland Park Police Department?
No, I'm not prepared to do it.
Thank you.
People are starting to snort at each other.
I just want to, uh, mention one thing, um, Gary, I know there was technical difficulty before, did you? Um, I just want to, uh, mention one thing, um, Gary, I know there was technical difficulty before, did you miss part of this?
You needed more memory.
Uh, uh, but so, I, you know, there won't be any gaps, right? Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mayor, uh, Matt Hirsch, 333 Felton Avenue. Um, one thing I meant to ask, what is the, I, I guess, can, can, or maybe Terry, can, can you explain the difference between a police director and a, and a police chief? And what, and what the hiring, and what the hiring of.
I would defer that to somebody with more knowledge.
I can answer that. A police director is an optional position. Uh, it is equal to a director of public works, a director of administration, a director of finance. Those are department heads, also called directors, who are authorized by statute to be appointed by the mayor, confidential to the mayor, and serving at the mayor's pleasure, meaning mayor's gone, so is the employee. Um, they are civilian and they are not in the chain of command of the police department. They set policy, they interface with the mayor, they also participate in the budget, but they are separate from the chain of command and they have no right to command the police department. The police chief is appointed by statute, under Title 40. Um, and we're going to get our attorney to make a definite, roll it into the process and stop playing around with what it might be and get it done. They are in the chain of command, they are governed by statute. In some cases, they're even civil service, but there's not a lot of them. Um, and once they're in, they're in, they're protected by the police chief's, uh, Bill of Rights. Uh, and they serve essentially until retirement, or terminated for just cause.
And I just want to, um, explain something a little bit further. Elsie said this in the very beginning, which seems like it was days ago already, um, in her report. The, the positions that we are searching for right now or interviewing for now are acting chief and acting captain. Because we will be supplying whoever gets the position with a mentor for a year. So, so, you know, I, I want that to be clear. Elsie, I see your hand up.
And in, we, the reason why we, um, decided to go acting, we wanted to see if, to promote from within, if that's available. And if, with the chiefs and the mentors that's going to be provided, these individuals, whoever they are, if they would, they are going to make a recommendation to us. So we'll, we'll get on, ongoing reports about how they're doing, or how well they're doing or how well they're not doing. And if the person that was chosen is our persons that were chosen, if they're not cutting it, if they're not getting it, then we reserve the option that we would go look outside at a police director possibly to come in and to make sure that we can groom or gets another eye to look at what we need to do. Because yes, we do have problems and I want to see those problems fixed. It frustrates the living bejesus out of me to see that we're having this conversation again. I'm tired. I've been beat up, I feel beat up, I'm frustrated that we're here having this conversation so many years later. And I believe that these are all issues that should have been fixed. I say over and over again what my experiences has been here in Highland Park. And like any other person of color in Highland Park or outside of Highland Park, I have experienced the bigotry, the bias, and everything else too. And it's not easy for me to sit here and not work hard to try to rid ourself of that. So I have a responsibility not only to be on the council, but for myself, for my family, and for everyone else of color to make sure that we're all treated fairly. And in that process, I want to make sure that the person that's going to be in charge and the, the, the chain of command or going up or going down, we get people that will really understand and teach people proper ways of police, community policing and how each and every one of us should be treated fairly. Because if the report says, um, come back and says, okay, um, there were nine and out of the nine, that there were five persons that of color that was treated differently, we still have a problem. And basically, sitting here and trying to put this all together, that's what I see, I want to address. I want to address fair, that everyone is treated equitable across the table.
Thank you. Um, can I, may I just ask a follow-up, just regarding director? Is there a difference, I mean, Councilperson George, is there a difference in the hiring, uh, procedures?
Yes, absolutely. Significant, where a director can be appointed, um, uh, when a new mayor is sworn in. Um, normally, the new, the processes that the new mayor will either, um, ask for the resignations of all directors or ones that they don't want anymore because they serve at, literally, at the mayor who appointed them's pleasure. Um, and bring in brand-new directors and say, we're done. Um, the police chief is selected, as I said, in separate process by statute. It's designated by statute, um, and your rights, uh, and statutory protections that apply, it's not nearly the same process.
Can you be clear, you don't need a police chief, right?
Wait, so, so.
No, you can, you have to have, you can have a director or not. You don't have to have a director. You don't have to have a chief, but you have the equivalent in what is designated by statute as an officer in charge.
But you can have a director and a chief.
So long as you have an officer in charge who has the same protections by statute as the chief of it.
But it's not running the department.
Is running the department.
Okay.
Uh, band plastic bags, leave those now on.
Please state your name and address.
Absolutely. Denise May Fryer, Wayne Street. Um, so you are pointing to, um, or you will be hiring a police chief, an acting police chief and an acting captain. You mentioned that they would be mentored for a year.
Mm-hmm.
You mentioned that the mentor would have input into whether the position would then become permanent, I believe? If I'm making a logical leap.
Well, well, the mentor would be advising.
Advising, okay, so that means they have input.
Yes, they would.
Okay. So who are the mentors? How are the mentors chosen? And what kind of input and what kind of mentoring are they doing?
Okay, Elsie, do you want to just, these are persons that were, these are persons that were formerly police chief
and have served in very diverse communities. And we would be looking for someone that, diversity is our number one thing. And that, um, that person that we would select from those candidates in the chiefs of police, we would want to have someone that would be able to come in, look at all our issues, the issues we're discussing now. And, you know, those are some are going to, going to be some of the questions that's going to be asked in the interview process. That we're going to, but that person would come in and they would be mentoring and looking at the structure of our police department and what needs, what needs to be changed, what needs to be fixed. And looking at the police culture that it currently is and see, okay, what do we move away from? Where do we want to go? And how do we fix whatever issues that are there?
So who selects the mentor?
Oh, they, we will, we will have resumes, from what I've gathered from our, um, our labor attorney, that we will be receiving resumes and then we would, we would be able to select from that group.
Well, let's, I, I'm not.
The public safety.
Are you sure about that?
Art.
I'm not sure about that.
I, I, in terms of the, the group that we're working with will provide us with.
Of resumes.
The, the names and resumes and then, I guess, the combination of Public Safety Committee can select the acting.
So here's a proposition. Is it possible to have public input into who the mentors are?
So, yeah, so I, I want to be clear because my, 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 my fellow sitting-up peer people are saying something, I don't know for sure. Um, so I'm, I would rather find out exactly how the mentor is given to us. Are we giving resumes or does the, does the Chiefs Association say, you know, here's the person that? I, I, I have to find out, I don't want to, I don't want to mislead. Sorry, Elsie and Terry, I, I'm just not clear from the Chiefs' organization exactly how the mentor comes to us.
So you could have a mentor thrust upon you that you don't choose?
I, I, I have to tell you, that's a question that we have to, we have to address.
Okay, I, I, I strongly, strongly urge that since by statute you're bound to follow certain regulations and certain protocols in the selection of the chief and the captain. I strongly suggest that you find out how this mentor or.
Absolutely.
Will each position have its own mentor or will it be one?
No, it's one person.
Okay, so I strongly urge you to figure out how this person is selected. And this perhaps might be your wiggle room of where you get your community involvement. And perhaps the community can have some input as to who is selected to be the mentor or at least have some input into it.
Right.
Because it seems to me that if the mentor is going to be advising the borough, who, uh, you know, whether or not the chief is doing a good job or the captain is doing a good job, that perhaps a good way of dealing with things is to have public input on who the mentor is. And that's all I would.
Yeah, the, the.
That you provide us with how this process.
Yeah, and the, yeah.
You need to know.
The other thing in terms of input that I heard somebody say, I can't remember who, um, that's interesting was, you know, maybe we can have an open public meeting that's just devoted to choosing the next chief and letting us hear the kinds of things that you would like to see. So, I remember who's.
That is Darcy Simorusti's suggestion.
Okay.
Darcy is the president of the.
Yes, I, I know Darcy very well, but I couldn't remember who said that.
Yeah, Darcy did.
Okay.
And that was with a lot of upheaval in the community.
I remember.
Really horrible, horrible, evil superintendent. And it really made a big difference in terms of how our school board relates to the people who are the, the stakeholders, which was what the SOB's favorite word was. Um, and as a stakeholder, I would like to remind him that I had no say in how he was chosen. And I'm a stakeholder here too, and all these folks here are citizens and stakeholders. And we, we all just want to have a nice, safe community and we don't want a kid walking into his house wab-wab, getting hurt. And we don't want any cops getting hurt either.
Right, and, and, and you know, yeah, I'm glad you said that because. Right. And, and, and you know, I'm glad you said that, because I think everybody up here wants the same thing. So it's not like we're saying different things. I think it's the way that we're trying to express ourselves that is maybe coming out differently, or being heard differently. So I appreciate very much you saying that, and, and I, you know, I hope you understand that all of us want the same thing.
I, I agree, but I strongly recommend that perhaps we do an expedited process in letting the community know how this mentor is selected, and thank you.
Yeah, I will, I will work on that and get back to you.
Thank you, Ms. House, for having me.
Thank you.
Jeffrey Aaron, two forty South Adelaide Avenue. I know a number of people here, I know a number of people here. I know Gail, I know Elsie, I know Susan, I know Tom. And what Gail just said has always been obvious to me, that we all want the same thing. I feel some pride in Highland Park, that we're battling this out. But I'll tell you something, and this may be obvious, maybe not. We're not gonna solve this problem, because we're looking at the top. And the problem comes from the bottom. When you have an inappropriate use of force, there you have a life-threatening situation, and that's what we're dealing with. However, when you get stopped for driving while black, when you get harassed because you look suspicious, and the suspicion is just the color of your skin, these things come from the bottom. There is a policeman who, I believe, is still on the force, who liberally uses the N-word when he's among his friends. And I know this, because I happen to be friends with some of his friends, who have told me this, and were so appalled, and just were unable to deal with it. And we, you know, there was no, nothing they could do. But I can tell you as an employer, a white male employer who had two white male partners, that I've known lots and lots of people, my employees, my partners, who would say the nastiest things, not only about people of color, but about women. Except when they're dealing with it, when they were the nicest people in the world. This is endemic to the entire American culture. And if we can ameliorate it, that's wonderful. But we're not gonna fix it, because if we fixed it, we would be unique in the whole damn country. So we have to bear that in mind. There's only so much we can do to get rid of the people who are toxic. And a lot of them are unchangeable, because this is the way they were brought up, and they don't know anything else, they don't know any other way to be. These people want what these people want. Yeah, there's been some anger, and the anger is because we're trying to figure out how the hell to do it. But this is endemic to our culture. And you have people who become policemen often, because they have personal problems. Then you have other people who become policemen, who are fine, fine people. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Hello, everybody. Raissa Buradai, South Second Avenue. This is one of my thinking, my thoughts. Some societies, countries, and countries are very criminal, and we are dealing with terroristic threats too, here in the United States. And here in this country, we have to be thankful that police is coming immediately, and on anonymous call, and sometimes they ask for ID. What I can see, the general problems as a general ethics. In my opinion, there is more general ethical behavior as to say on time, thank you, sorry for taking your time, thank you for cooperating with police and showing your ID, and thank you for being helpful, and thank you for being helpful for police. As in old heartwarming movies, I'm sorry for my English.
You're doing very well.
Thank you, I'm trying. As in old movies, we can see how nice police talking and, you know, other people. I like old movies. What I'm trying to say, if there is not general ethics, many things can go wrong. I'm sure that there is general ethics meaning a lot. And so, I'm trying to say that if we will put the general ethics in our behavior every day, our life, police department, our department behavior, the things will change, and they will became much better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Monique Coleman again. I just wanted to submit to you a resource that I hope you would seriously consider, and possibly the new commission. Because I heard you, this, this came to my mind when I heard you, Gail, speak about the Noble training that you've done in the past, and, you know, reaching out to them again, and community policing being discussed as well. And I just want you to seriously consider doing something a little different at this point in terms of trainings, and the way you approach policy change and reform in the police department. I wanna talk about procedural justice, and how that can be, that really encompasses all that we're talking about here. Yale Law Center has a center that's dedicated to procedural justice. It's called the Collaborative Lab. And I recently met the director of that lab, and she talked about the work that that lab is doing around the country with police departments, singularly focusing on procedural justice in police departments, and how to use that to establish legitimacy, fairness, and trust between the members of the community and police department. They've worked with Baltimore, major cities around this country, and they are willing to come here. I think we need to really look at other resources for trainings. And I'm just gonna say to you, the four principles here of procedural justice, it encompasses everything we've said here. The dimensions of procedural justice are voice, the perception that your side of the story has been heard. Two, respect, perception that the system players treat you with dignity and respect. Three, neutrality, we're talking about anti-bias, perception that the decision-making process is unbiased and trustworthy. Four, understanding, comprehension of the process and how decisions are made. And five, helpfulness, perception that system players are interested in your personal situation to the extent that the law allows. Underlying procedural justice is the idea that the criminal justice system must constantly be demonstrating its legitimacy to the public it serves. And I highly recommend that this is something we consider here, bringing this concept in this time here of change about to occur in the police department, this concept into infusing it into policy and practice.
Thank you.
I just wanna come back to.
Stop, can you state your name and?
Sorry, Sonia had one, one three-three Banner Street. This is my second time up here tonight. Um, I just wanted to come back to what I brought up when I came up here originally, about the importance of the community being involved. I think a lot more discussion, a lot has kind of, more has been elaborated on in terms of the process of hiring the new act, acting chief and captain. And I think that, I just wanna make sure that it's clear that regardless of this person's being hired from internally, regardless of whatever procedures have to be involved, the community also wants to be at the table, and I just wanna make sure that that is very clear. I also just want to make a general point, which is about diversity. And I know that we've talked about how much work has been done in, in the community regarding diversity, regarding race. But I, I think I'm seeing a statistic that our police department is two percent black. And I think that when we come to a situation like this, now we're hiring internally for a leadership position, and I'm wondering how many people of color are actually even in a position that they could come to a leadership position in our police department. And I hope that the person that's gonna get hired, it's clear, is gonna be sitting in this post for probably thirty years, just like our current chief has been. And I hope that in the next thirty years, we are not in the same position, where we are dealing with hiring internally with a police force that looks the exact same as what we've been dealing with. Um, I think it's really important that this is, this is addressed, that there is real effort put into ensuring that we have a diverse police force, ensuring that the police force is partnering with organizations like, what was it called, Noble? Or whatever else, I'm sure there is many of them out there, for, for black police officers, for Latino police officers, et cetera. We need to be partnering with all of them, to make sure that our police force is diverse, that we have people in place of color, that can, are ready to rise into leadership positions, and that understand the context, because that's what's missing here. We need people that know what we're dealing with.
So, so, Sonia, I just wanna say, twenty years ago, when I was sitting over there with, with some of the people who were here before, we were saying the exact same things.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And, and, I know, I know, I'm recognizing that, and, and, you know, you, it's ironic.
My point is that it is gonna continue, exactly what the woman I just stated.
So, so, so I'm just pointing.
We're setting ourselves up for this.
Right, so I'm pointing out the irony of it, but.
It's not irony. We are in the position to change it, and it's not happening.
Okay, but I also wanna say, I also wanna say, chief, how long were you chief?
Um, eleven years from February first.
Yeah, so, and, and he wasn't, he, he, he was, I'm sorry, he, um, he wasn't the chief for thirty years. He's been on the force for thirty years.
For control and most of my career, probably, in recent, but can I address that just a minute?
Sure.
To clarify.
Sure.
I take her point well, we look for diversity, we welcome it. We got this time, we hired, we hired two African-American officers who are relatively new, because they just were hired, but I'm out. But I worked the majority of my career under Ron Haskins, who was an African-American chief. By the way, his great nephew is the great private state quarterback that you see on TV. But Ron Haskins taught me a great deal, and we welcome diversity. In fact, we're in the process of hiring a Hispanic officer, if all goes well with the background and everything. So we encourage diversity in our ranks, and it's, we're two percent. So, over ten percent. We have twenty-seven officers, currently two are African-American, and I think one, two, two are Hispanic, two are Hispanic, three, four.
And four, and one Arab?
Yeah.
Wait, wait, what was it you said?
I just wanna say also that, since I've been here, you have no idea how challenging it has been to get African-American officers. And that has been one of the things, that's when Mobile first came into play, because I, I was busy trying to find, how do we make this happen? And that's when I heard about Mobile, and I invited them to come, and invited to post for us, to advertise our jobs for us, not only through the NAACP, but through Mobile, and have them do a posting across the country, and say, this is what we're looking for, because it's, it's very, very challenging. One of the challenges that we have, because we are small, when we do get officers that come in, and we say, okay, great, we have one now, somebody gobbles them up, the bigger department will come in, and they, you want more exposure, so we wind up losing officers as we get them to come in. And we get, and African-American officers are highly sought after, because most towns have the same problem. They want more diversity in their department, and it's very challenging to get African-American officers. So if, when we interviewed the last, not this past round, the round before, we were lucky. But even so, even in that batch that we had, we had African-American officers that was gobbled up. We got lucky that we were able to retain two. We were very happy for that. We started, I think we had five in the process, and we wound up with two, you know. So it's, it's very difficult, because once the officers there meet all the qualifications, everything is in place, we make an offer, somebody comes in with a better offer, or another department is giving them something else, and we always can't afford to make, compete, or to match the offer that there's, that they're being offered, or the position that they're being offered somebody else, because they're gonna get a broader scope of experience rather than staying in a small town.
And probably more money too.
Definitely more money. So it's, it's challenging, but that doesn't say we stop. I still keep talking to people all over. I, I talk to Mobile members, I talk to black law enforcement, whatever, wherever I can get my voice in, I put it out there that, hey, we're looking, we're looking, we're looking, we're looking.
And, and I have to, um.
Council, I just wanna make this. I have, actually have one that just, just came in.
Could you just state your name and address?
Lincoln, London, four thirty-three River Road, Highland Park. Just, just completed his master's degree, criminal justice, excellent police officers. Matter of fact, our department was looking for two officers recently, but they're looking for someone that was actually out of the academy, right, to have a training. So that kind of eliminated that process, but I'm constantly looking for officers, not only for Highland Park, but for the towns as well. You know, I open myself up to that. They're on my Facebook page, so new chief, sergeant, lieutenant. Can I ask, chief, because they say there's nothing they're gonna do right now. See me, we need minority law, we're not just African-American, but we also need Asian-American resources as well.
Those are the hardest.
Yeah, those are very hard. So we're in Edison Police Department, trying to help them, but that's what we're gonna do. But, yeah, so we're available, we avail ourselves to boroughs as needed.
Well, you're right.
And, and it, it's, it's getting very late, and we're texting, calling, not to just go beyond ten o'clock. We have more to do afterwards in our conference agenda, so my, I have a motion to go into executive session to talk about acquisitions and litigation, followed by conference meeting. Everyone have a safe and happy holiday. I need a second.